As well. Thank you. At this time, we have a number of deputations. I'd like to ask, if I may, our fire chief, Mr. Lee Smith, to come forward, please. He has a power report presentation. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Your Worship, members of council, staff, and guests. I'd like to do a report on the fire we had recently at Cavendish Manor on Diamond Street in Niagara Falls. We had a call, I was actually during a council review meeting at the time, and called at 10:54 a.m. There was a direct connection alarm, which means they have a direct signal into the fire station, so we can get the signal as quickly as possible, assemble crews, and respond to the scene. The call to that address necessitates a response of all our fire stations, one, two, and three, so all the on-duty crews that we have available respond to the call. We had one call in progress already for a medical that had to divert. And we also included Station Four, and we called back crews for a second alarm because of the magnitude of the evacuations that were required at that address. This truly was a multi-agency response in that sense. This is what we saw when we got on the scene. This is a little bit into the fire, but we had evacuation state planes out the second floor window where the fire originated, and you could see large volumes of smoke, and there were flames also at one point coming out of the second floor window. Both the east and the west side had this similar type of situation occurring, and all, we can only see the one side, there were similar type of rescues going on on the other side of the building. So it was extremely dangerous in the fact that we had smoke penetrating not only just one room, but extended beyond the room of origin. And firefighters did an excellent job at the three main functions that they had when they arrived on scene. The first was to evacuate those immediately in danger from the fire. Second is to extinguish the fire, and thirdly, to evacuate the rest of those people in the building. And even once the fire appeared to be under control from the outside, there were still some very hazardous situations on the inside that necessitated further evacuation through ground ladders and our aerial truck set out to the second floor window. And just to give you an idea of what that was, I'll show you some interior pictures. This was the room of origin where the fire occurred. As you can tell, there was extensive damage. The room temperature would have been over 1,000 degrees at the height of the fire, and it was devastating to anything, and there was no way that anyone could survive being inside this room while the fire was on. This is the door that leads into the corridor, and as you can see, it penetrated through that doorway and into the hallway. You can see a typical beep pattern outside the door indicating fire coming through there. The walls are very dark with smoke, and it was extremely thick. You couldn't survive in the hallway either, and that really was the reason we had to bring people out the windows. Our first course of action would be to take people out of the building, through the corridors and down the stairways, but without having a corridor to be able to do that, they had to come directly out the windows. And this, again, is another picture of the corridor. You can see it's very black, smoke stained, and it was extremely hot on that second floor. These were some comments that came from some of the people that were on the scene that day, and there were residents of the building that looked like they were ready to jump out the second floor windows. They were extremely afraid, and they were also being threatened by fire laughing into some of the rooms. The statement in the paper was, "It was a phenomenal rescue," and I really believe it was a phenomenal rescue. There were many agencies that were involved. Again, firefighters did an excellent job. EMS took every single patient, it was their first, and treated, transported 11 patients and treated or assessed over 70 patients when they were on the scene that day. The staff in the building did an excellent job at coordinating all the logistics for all the residents, evacuating them and helping them across the street into Fallsview Hoosgate Building, where they accumulated there, and making sure they had their meds and they contacted family, and it was quite a task undertaking. Transit was there with a number of buses, just in case we had to evacuate to some of the close hotels in the area. St. John's ambulance had their sheriff vans there as well that had wheelchair capability. Niagara Regional Fire Bus were coordinated and brought in so that they could provide rehab for the firefighters and the emergency services workers that needed it. We had Niagara Peninsula Energy, which Niagara Falls Hydro and Enbridge, also to help us with utilities. And Red Cross was called in to help the residents, the evacuated residents relocate as well. So with all those agencies, they all performed extremely well. This was, it was a wonderful experience from the fact that we worked so well together, and we got the, had the best possible outcome from a very tragic, potentially tragic situation. But there were some people who participated in this fire call, who came to the aid of the residents, who didn't really have an obligation, as many of the emergency agencies did. And what we'd like to do is to be able to recognize that some of the residents saw what was happening, and before emergency services could actually get on the scene, decided to take some actions into their own hands, gathering ladders and running to the building to try and help some of those seniors that were trying to evacuate the building from the second floor get down. And we have a number of them here today. There are five in total, and I'd like to turn it over to the mayor so that he can identify them, and we can call them up to be recognized for their great efforts at that fire.
Well, thank you, Chief Smith. I wanted to add what you had said as well. I had a chance to thank the members of our firefighting service. As you know, the meeting after this event took place, but I have to tell you that this could have certainly been a very tragic event and with a very tragic outcome, and I was most pleased, and we were kept abreast of the situation by your office, and certainly we attended the site and the scene as well when you were there. We appreciate the professional manner in which your firefighting crew acted, and also the emergency responders were very, very well-trained to evacuate, which they did, and certainly to those people at the nursing home acted properly as far as their staff went to get their patients and their guests out of the facility. So what could have been a very serious tragedy, of course, was avoided, and I appreciate the efforts of all those involved. We do have a number of individuals that we've asked to come tonight, Chief, as you know. I'd like to take a moment to, if I could, to have them come forward to accept our appreciation by way of certificate. The first individual is Mr. Bill Butson. And Bill, if I could just read this, "On behalf of the members of Niagara Falls City Council, we'd like to extend our appreciation to you for your swift response and assistance in the evacuation of the residents at Cavendish Manor. Your humanitarian efforts to put the safety of others above your own is invaluable to our community." That's I'm by myself, and members of council. Also, I need to call forward Mr. Donovan DiMarco. Is Donovan here? Okay.
No, Dom asked me to receive that from him.
Oh, okay. Mr. Mike Nixon. Again, Mike, the wording is the same, and thank you very much for your commitment as well. And Mr. Tom Nixon. Tom, thank you very much. Appreciate your help. Thank you. And finally, Mr. Bruce Pritchard. Thank you very much, Bruce. Can you just get together, Tom? Thank you. Thank you very much. Very good work. Thank you. Members of council, at this time, I'd like, sorry, Councilor Iannone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a bylaw on the books that we have a couple of people here who would have to sit through the whole budget meeting to get through, so I was asked, I wanted to know if we could move up. There's my bylaws. All the bylaws? We could move up the bylaws and do them now?
Yeah, we can move up all the bylaws.
Can't move them all up?
No.
So I'd like, I'd like to move up Bylaw 2008-99, a bylaw to amend, to permit the development of a residential plan of subdivision on the north side of Lundys Lane between Garner Road and Beechwood Road.
Moved by Councilor Iannone, seconded by Councilor Peter Angelo. Any comments? All those in favor? Motion is carried. Mr. Clear?
Bylaw 2008 dash, which one was it? 99, read a first time.
Okay, kind of a motion to have the bylaws read second and third. Moved by Councilor Iannone, seconded by Councilor Peter Angelo. You heard the motion. Any comments? All those in favor? Motion is carried.
Bylaw 2008-99, read a second and third time, and passed.
Thank you. Members of council, at this time, I'm going to turn the chair over to our Chairman of Corporate Services. We're going to be discussing budget, so at this time, I'd like to ask Councilor Peter Angelo to come forward, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. And before we get into the capital budget, I would like to ask members of council if they would consider deferring items three and four on our capital budget discussions for tonight. Reports deal with the Gardner West, oh, sorry, the Gardner Southwest and Grassy Brook Sanitary Service areas, and also the borrowing for capital expenditures. I don't believe that either one of these reports impact our capital budget discussions tonight, and we have some key members on staff that we're hoping will be here next time we discuss it. Moved by Councilor Iannone, seconded by Councilor Wing.
Just so we clarify, when are we deferring it to? Let's be clear here. Are we deferring it to the next meeting?
If possible, yeah. I don't see why the reports are done. We just need to do a little more work on, because a lot of questions have come since the agenda went eloping. I think it was necessary to allow us to be prepared to address those.
That's good. Thank you.
Here, there is a motion on the floor to defer those two reports. All those in favor? Opposed, motions carried. Thank you. So the first item on our agenda then is CPS 2008-05, dealing with the capital budget for the city from 2008 to 2012, and I would now turn it over to Mr. McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to go through, hopefully fairly quickly, a bit of a slide presentation to focus us in on the two binders that we have, and hopefully bring us to the point where we can make a decision on the capital budget going forward. As you know, we introduced the budget back in February 25th, the capital budget, and following that, thank you, on April the 7th, staff developed and presented a package for council that took all of the items in your large green budget, and we broke them down, all of the items, into three different categories. And there are, if you look at tab number one, and we'll bend to this in a little more detail in a minute, attached to tab number one, additional green pages, shows those, that's sort of the update of those categories. And what we've done with these is just really to summarize them, and I'm going to speak to those particular categories in a few minutes as we get going. The, on June the 9th, council received a package containing the new revised capital budget summaries and worksheets, and the category two prioritization. The smaller binder you have is really going to focus in a minute on category two. The three categories showing on the next slide here is basically category one are the projects that we have already started. Council has previously approved them, and in staff's opinion, they're in progress, and these are projects that we would not want to stop in any way. Both, all of the category projects, one, two, and three, again, if you stay on tab one, and if you could keep that tab one open to that green cover summary sheet, the capital project budgets '08 to '12, all of those projects are included within that $72 million. And so we've taken the 72, broken it into three categories, and we've said category one are projects that are already in place, because even though the $72 million is listed as the '08 capital budget, a great deal of that are as a result of projects that include the previous years, and they just come forward, so we end up paying for them, a lot of it in '08, and I'll give you some detail on that in a minute. Category two are the projects that are listed for '08, but you have not yet approved them. And so if council decided to defer them, cancel them, or do whatever, you have the ability to do that. Category three are the projects that really go beyond that $72 million, and you're dealing with the projects that really don't even come to your attention to make a final decision on until '09 to '12. So that's basically how we've broken them down. To assist staff in selecting capital priorities, we came up with criteria. At the last council meeting, you'll recall, Councilor Cario said, "Look, just to make this a bit easier and more focused, we'd appreciate staff coming back and prioritizing the capital projects." So what we've done is we went through an exercise, we developed a set of criteria, and we went through a process, and the result was that we have prioritized particularly the capital or the category two projects. And this is just a list of the criteria we used in order to weight the different projects, how these projects fit the council priorities, whether they're health and safety issues, and how critical it would be if we stopped them, availability of external funding in some projects, there's significant other sources of money coming in, and so we didn't want to stop a project if we're putting in a certain percent and give up other funds, the economic development impacts of these projects, operational impacts, and quality of life and community support. So based on that, we, again, we prioritized category two. We didn't prioritize category one, because in our opinion, they're already in place. We didn't prioritize category three, because they are projects that, in fact, you don't have to make a decision on in the sense of spending money and commitments until '09 and beyond. The real focus is category two. And we've taken that category, and we prioritize them according to high, medium, and low, and you'll notice the color there, because in your white binder, we've actually done a color coding of those projects to allow council to focus in on those. The next chart just gives you an idea where we're at here with the revised budget, again, that you have in the summary sheet. You recall, I think the original sheet showed a $78 million budget on '08, and what you have here is a $72 million budget, and that's simply because some of the projects were moved into other years, and the, and there was some revenue, extra revenue available just because of reshuffling these particular costs. If you want, we can get into specific details in a few minutes, and Todd will be able to sort of guide us through that. But this is really the project, or the total amount we're looking at going forward with right now. So to the category one projects, and this is kind of a key area here, before we flip this chart, you can see the $72,884,000. Of that amount, the next slide will show you that actually $54 million of that is in that category one. So while we're clearly looking tonight to get approval on the '08 capital budget, and it shows the total amount of $72 million, the fact is, can you just go to the next slide? Category one shows that $54 million is in that category one. So it's the difference between the $72 million and the $54, that is the category two, that we're really, that we're seeing have not, these projects have not started yet. And then you can see sort of down the line, the $78 million is the, because of decisions we've made, we're spending $54 million in '08, '16, and so on down the line. That's the result of decisions that have already been made. The next slide is important because it really talks about the debt impact of that, and I'm still looking at category one, so I'm saying if you didn't approve any other projects, you basically are dealing with an '08 expenditures in the area of $54 million, even if you don't approve any new projects whatsoever. This is a little bit hard to see, but what it, what it shows really is, is that the impact of that debt in terms of percentages, the impact on the budget, eventually on the operating budget, and it basically shows in '08, there is actually, there's no debenturing, or no new debt that comes on stream in '08 as a result of category one. But as you saw from the slide a few minutes ago, there is impacts further down the line. And over the full five-year sub this capital budget, those category one items will result in approximately 3.35% increase. You can see it on the right-hand corner down below there. And where the impact hits us is really in '10, when, and it's, you know, we're going to get into this in a few minutes, then you know, the big hit and the spike on our capital budget is really, the biggest spike is the arena project, because we're looking at potentially new debt of $29 million. So that's, that is the most significant. That results alone, that $29 million results alone in a 2.6% increase because of that project. So this gives you kind of an idea of category one that you're already committed to, basically, unless you can find some things in it, and we can answer any questions on that tonight, but already we're committed to 3.35, the majority of which is as a result of the arena. Category two, of course, is the, is the one that we've, we always hope to focus in on in the white binder, and it shows on the next slide the difference between the 72 and the 54. So what we're saying here is that there's $17 million of projects in the '08 budget that have not begun yet, and we received no approval to move on them. If you approve the $17 million, that's not the end of those projects, of course. What that means is 17 million here, but several of them are projects that go over several years, and so you start with 17, and actually, your total cost to begin that 17 is $87 million to spread over the five years. So it isn't 17, and you're all done. You carry those projects throughout. So while 17 on 72 doesn't sound like a lot, it's pretty significant when you look at the total cumulative expenses that will incur as a result of that. So it's the 17 million that we're really going to focus on. The debt impact on the next page of that 17 million, again, this is a little bit tougher to read, but the bottom line in the right-hand corner here shows if you approve the $17 million, the total cost in terms of impact, percentage-wise, is 4.73% increase. And again, the big, big parts of that cost, in that, in this particular case, this is sort of new debt you'd be taking on. The arena, don't forget, is in category one, and I'll show another slide in a minute to highlight the largest projects. The largest project in category two is the grade separation, the $11 million that you'll see under the new debt, the third column from the left, the 11 million. So that is the single largest project, and that one alone is about half of that increase. It's about 2.2% increase of the total 4.7. So it has an impact going forward as a result of that 17 million. Category three projects, as you can see on the next slide, the, there's no impact on the, in '08, and you can see the numbers going forward. Again, that's on the assumption that you approve the category three projects, and you're really not being asked to make any expenditures on those items tonight. Staff, we tend to look at the, it's a five-year capital budget, and year number one is when you make a commitment on '08, we're going to be starting to do things to incur costs because of that. On the '09 and beyond, they're part of our plan, but we're not planning on spending that money. We'll be back to council at various steps before we actually spend money on those projects. And again, the category three shows on the next slide the debt impact on that, and actually, those category three projects add up to about 2.59%. So just to give you a sort of a flavor of that. The next page gives that summary with a better chart to show you that on category one, the new debt we take on, or have taken on, I guess, is the 3.35. Category two is 4.73, and category three is the 2.59. So overall, if all of these were approved, i.e. the category three particularly, and all of the $17 million, we'd be looking over the five-year period of an increase of just over 10%. This is just a list of the major projects, because you're talking, we're really, and this is a chart we get, actually, the next chart shows a real spike in our debt. These are the largest projects because they're over $5 million. And again, the big one is the arena, the grade separation, and then the Boys and Girls Club. And you get an idea of the percentage increase that they would have on our budget if they're approved. The next slide gives you a bit of a more of a graphic on it, and you can see the sort of purple mold color down below there gives you an idea of what our current debt outstanding is, assuming we didn't take on any more debt at all. And you can see, you hit '09, and you get this huge spike in '09, and again, that's almost totally due to the arena project because of the sheer size of that. And then once you get up at that level, we kind of go along, and hopefully no more big spikes that we have to hit. But this just gives you an idea in terms of what it does to our total debt carrying. The next chart, and while the debt is significant, obviously, and it's important to be tuned into it, taxpayers and the council relate to the impact that it really has on the levy, and for us, it's really the carrying charges, the debt servicing, because that's where we need to come up with the operating monies to deal with it. And what you've got here is the, the bottom line right now shows where we're at, the squares, this will, let me just see here, I'm not sure. Yeah, the blue one with the triangle, the blue one is where we're about to go if we approve these items, and you can see we'd end up, oh, there it is, shows we're going to end up at just over 7%. Currently, in '08, we're about 3.3%. So we're talking about a 4% increase percent of our own source revenues if we approved all these. And this is a very important slide, because it kind of, we've talked about this many times before, because at the top line, and again, not that we want to get to that point, but the top line is the maximum that we're allowed to based on the provincial guidelines. Guidelines says you cannot go more than 25% of your own source revenue. Well, we've always been pretty low the last few years because of the investment in various infrastructures. We've raised it, and if we spend all the money that's on the table here now, we'll go to approximately 7%. Still well within. What I don't see here, and we have talked about it before with the consultants that we've had in, and I know it's a moving target, but the average, the average for municipalities, and I see this, is that what that municipal average percentage is there, Todd? Is that from other communities, or is that?
That was the BMA.
BMA, yes, so you're referring to. So as you can see, that one's in about 4%. So they're saying we've been below average up to this point. Four is the average, and that's based on old data, however, because we don't know what they've done in their budget this year either, and I don't know how high they're going to go, but based on new data for us, we'll be looking at 7%. So that's just a quick kind of overview in terms of where we're at. What we were hoping to do, of course, is to focus in on the, on the white binder you have, which is really the category two projects. And what we have here, we have a list of all the projects. In the front summary sheet, you can see the scenario and the breakdown of the priorities. And I'm looking at category two capital budget, the first one that we've colored in, and you can see at the $17 million, 8.7 million, the staff have evaluated to be at 8.7 million for the high priority, 7.2 for medium, and 1.085 for the low priorities. And we're not suggesting they're not important, we're saying, obviously, they wouldn't be in here, but we're saying if we had to make a call based on the weighting factors we've given them, this is how they would fall into place. Now, throughout the rest of this particular tab, it's a breakdown into the various departments, the key operating departments, really, in terms of how they rate it. in here, but we're saying if we had to make a call based on the weighting factors we've given them, this is how they would fall into place. Now, throughout the rest of this particular tab, it's a breakdown into the various departments, the key operating departments, really, in terms of how they rate it. And this was done, by the way, with the directors, obviously, senior staff in each department, as well as myself in finance involved with this, this exercise. So it gives you an idea to respond specifically to the question council had, how would we prioritize them. Now, what we have as well, and we provided, and as you go to Tab 1, and you look at Fire Services, you have the one that runs summary sheet, and Fire Services has broken their Category 2 down into the priority. And behind it is a bit of a detail sheet on each one of the projects. And those detail sheets refer specifically to the, to this Category 2 projects, to really the '08 budget, okay? So there's some details there, and it's a little more detailed than you have in the larger binder that you received earlier on. At the back, at the back of this, we've also done detail sheets beginning in category, or in Tab number 5, we've also provided detail sheets, further detail sheets on the Category 3, or the projects for '09 to '12. So, anyway, so, so that's on, on Tab 5. So again, I hope this is not too confusing. We've, we've taken all the capital budgets, and we've listed them into three different categories. And that's summary for you. But what we're really doing here with this binder is focusing on just that Category 2 package, which is the '08 items that have, have not received any approval from council yet. So I guess what we're, we're hoping is that council will give us some direction on those particular projects that they wish to amend, change, or approve, and we can go forward with that. There are some other items, and it's referred to in the, the one report that we didn't defer, of course, is on the museum. And of course, that's, we have some guests here tonight wondering where that is. That's in the budget, obviously. And part of, part of, it's, it's in the package here, there's details on this. It's included in the 72? Yeah. Yeah, it is included in the 72, and it would be, however, included as a Category 3, because there's no money to be provided in '08. So it's not part of the 17 million, but it's part of the 72 million. So it's in the package that way. So, so if I haven't totally confused you on categories and priorities and areas, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, so.
Thanks. I have Counselor Thompson, I wish he was to speak first, and then Mayor Salsi.
Yeah, well, first of all, I want to congratulate the staff on the prior, prioritization of the, the budget. I think it makes it extremely simple. I don't know who came up with that idea, who suggested that, but it was a good idea.
I think it was me. Oh, it was somebody over there, so. Wasn't on this side.
Anyway, whoever did it, it was a good job, and it makes it very simple to see what, what priorities are. And I liked your criteria, the way you evaluated all of them here. Is the, where does the $11 million for Morrison Street stand on that? That's in, in 2009?
That's correct, it's in 2009. There is, there is money in '08, there's actually, I think Todd will clarify the numbers, there's $100,000 in '08 to begin to do the study work for it and details on it. But the real money is in '09, and of course, we're assuming that if council makes a decision in '08 to spend $100,000, you're, you're going down the path to spend the $11 million beginning in '09. So it's $100,000, is that correct?
Well, before we, before we get off on that, we had Mr. Issippon, who was here a few weeks ago, and came up with some suggestions, and I have been working along with him, trying to assist to see if his comments and suggestions have merit. They certainly excited me and took us from focusing just on overpasses to looking at the overall problem and trying to deal with rail relocation and getting it out of the community completely, which would save, in the long run, millions of dollars. And we've had a meeting with Mr. Dulevik, and there will be a report coming in. I can assure you that Mr. Issippon has almost taken this on as a full-time job. He's been meeting regularly with the railroad people, with the Bridge Commission, and researching this as much as he can. And I'm, I'm surprised that we haven't thought about this before, resolving the problem rather than just trying to look for isolated solutions at railroad crossings. If his, and it's going to take a tremendous amount of effort to convince the railroads and the federal government to work along with us, but the savings will be immense, not only $11 million, but substantially more. And even if we had to put some dollars into our capital budget to participate in a program of finding an overall solution, it's certainly going to be much cheaper, in my opinion. So I would hope that we're not going to seriously consider the $100,000 or the $11 million until we have a, a few meetings and we find out where we're going with respect to that, because it truly can be a solution that is going to save the municipality a lot of money if there's any movement on the, on the people that are involved. So hopefully, that can be taken out at this particular time.
Okay. I have Mayor Salsi and Counselor Carrio.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I certainly concur. I think there's a feeling amongst council members, and I, I sense the, the intensity to look at that destruction project at this point has not reached the peak by any means, and it certainly could be put back until we investigate alternatives. I don't think that the ministry yet has received or has responded with regard to the bumping process. I think we should ask staff that question, if I could for you, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely.
Has the ministry responded yet?
Mr. Holman.
So the bump-up request has been no response, so maybe at this point, it would be appropriate to set that matter back until a later date, and to look at the alternatives, as Counselor Thompson had suggested. But even more so, I think the recommendation that you talked about earlier, moving forward, you think it would be in order to then approve the Category 1 issues first, and we can deal with the breakdown on the others as we proceed to 2 and 3. So if you'll accept that motion, Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion to approve the Category 1, which our project's already underway at this point.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor to approve Category 1 projects made by Mayor Salsi, seconded by Counselor DiOdati. Is there any members of council, Councilor Wing, that have an issue with any of them?
Well, yeah, Counselor Iannone and I have an issue with a number of Category 1 projects, but it's appearing at this point that it's a little too late to be doing anything about them. I have to say, I'm really surprised, there was a number of projects in this budget that we first received a couple months ago, and I remember circling them and making notes, no, 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 but it's too late now. The one that I am still wondering about, though, is, it's under museums, Armory Refurbishment, why project cannot be stopped, there's nothing there. I know with a lot of these, we can't stop because we're already in a contract, it would cost us money to break the contract. This money is planned to continue over three years. Can we stop this right now? I'd rather put this kind of money into the Lundy's Lane Historical Museum, because if we don't do it, we're going to be, it's going to be falling down in three, four years, and we have to spend the money anyhow. So can we stop these armory projects that are in Category 1?
Yeah, to the Chair, the armory projects, I may be mistaken, but I don't think they're in Category 1. They haven't been started yet, so they're still in the future on, I think it's, is it the elevator that you're talking about?
No, it's, here.
If you could just tell me the tab number, and I can go right to it.
It's the screen.
Oh, it, the, oh, there's, there has been some refurbishment work done, I believe some of it had to do with the roofing and others, but where they had the leaky roof, and we had some asbestos issues. But we've got Category 2, Category 3, the balance of it, that can be postponed. And I'm talking about the armory elevator, the armory parking lot, and the armory windows.
What about the 2009 and 2010 expenditures, are there other Category 1?
Some of that has to do, we did have to replace the roof there, because it was leaking, and there were some other works that had to be done that was approved by council.
Okay, so then we can't, I guess there's nothing we can do about any of the Category 1.
The Category 1s, exactly. Okay, there is a motion on the floor, then, to approve all Category 1 projects. Any other counselors have a question or comment? Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, is there, is there anyone who has really evaluated, we've had this report indicating the percentage increases, and is there, is there an impact on the budget on an annualized basis on how we get to the next three or four years, or five years? What kind of a percentage impact? Are we talking 10.67 over the total capital budget? Is that what you're talking about?
I think that's only if you approve Category 1, 2, and 3.
Yes, no, but I'm talking, you know, how do we, how do we tell, somebody says, well, we're, we're going to end up with 78 or 67 million in debt over the next five years. How do we tell somebody the impact on their taxes?
The, and actually, the chart that's up there now, the Category 1 that, that the motion is on is 3.35%. But to be honest, I mean, that can change, the 3.5, that's the gross amount if we've done nothing to generate revenue, to bring others, other various grants that could help impact our budget. If, if nothing changed, and we just had to pay that, it'd be 3.5%. But we're hoping for other government sources of money, we're hoping for other revenue sources. That, that doesn't mean that will be directly attributed to an increase in the levy. But if, as it stands alone, it's 3.35.
And that's just a capital spending? And it has nothing to do with an operating budget?
That's correct.
Or an increase in our?
And that's only on the projects that are already, basically, have been pre-approved.
Okay, so the minimum you're going to see is 3.5% plus the operating budget increase for next year?
Yes. That's the, that's the worst-case scenario, but I would just remind you that we've, similar sort of situation for the operating budget this year and last year, but we were able to come up with other savings within the operating budget and other sources of revenue to actually bring the total impact on the rate pair to 2.48%.
Can I just clarify that 3.35% is not for next year?
That's correct, yeah.
No, if I'd just like to clarify that, if you look at the chart, which says the debt impact for all the Category 1 items, we can quickly walk through on an annual basis what the impact would be. In 2009, there would be no impact on, on the budget for items that we're borrowing, because you remember that we borrow, we would borrow in 2009 and start paying it back in 2010. So for 2009, even though we're entering into borrowing, making a debenture, we would have no expense related to that. So in 2010, we would see that the three areas that we're going to, we're projecting that we're going to borrow would have a 3/4 of a percent of impact on the tax rate. In 2010, we, that's when we anticipate going to the, the Arena being debentured and some other items. And that's when we would see, in 2011, when we start paying that back, we would see a 2.6% increase. So that, that chart that's up on the screen now is a summary of all the potential impact, but you have to get into the meat and potatoes, and we see that that annualized would be in 2010, we would see a 3/4 of a 1% tax increase.
Okay. Is there any other questions to the motion, then? Counselor Carrio, please.
Thank you. That goes along with the question I was going to ask before, when you said a percentage of revenue, I was going to ask what revenue? So that's not anticipating increased revenue, like the Hilton project coming on stream and paying an additional amount of taxes? That's based on the taxes that we're collecting today?
Yes, the, the, are you talking about the debt limit, the 25%?
When you were talking about, he was going to, a percentage of revenue.
The impact?
As a percentage of revenue.
Percentage of own-source revenue is, is the limit that the province gives us, that is based on our annualized impact, would include our tax, our tax revenues plus the revenues we get from the water and sewer pump. So it's a limit, it's a threshold that we get.
The impact, the budget impact.
I understand that, Todd, but my question.
Have you factored in the revenue?
Revenue based on today's revenue?
Yes.
Projected to 2012?
Yes, sorry. The, the impact is, is in today's dollars, where we said that 1% tax rate increase is really equivalent to about $440,000 in taxable revenue, tax rate. And as John had indicated, Mr. McDonald had indicated, we are looking at other sources of revenue that maybe would offset just a direct correlation between the tax levy and the, and where we get the?
We can assume assessment's not going to go down?
Assessment's going to probably rise, and once again, as you know, in 2009, it's a new assessment year. And what happens in a new assessment year, some properties go up, some properties stay the same, some properties might even go down, and it, and it kind of changes the whole mix of our assessment base. So it's difficult to project, that's why we went with 2008 numbers. We know that 1% equates roughly to $440,000 in taxable revenue to show what the potential impact would be in the future.
And just to be clear, then, the 3.35 debt impact is an accumulated impact?
Yes.
It's accumulated. .75 in '09?
Yes.
2.6 in '10. Then what happens in '11 and '12? There's no number.
There's no, there's no debt issue for those Category 1 projects in those years. What we've done is we've isolated it. And the other thing is that when we go out to borrow, we'll have an impact on that, as we've talked about in previous meetings, depending on what the rates of interest are at that term, or even what, how long we would amortize the, the debenture issue over.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Amayes, please.
After listening to Counselor Carrio, and what he said there, and talking about some of these projects that are on, on the go now, now we're looking at a 3.35% that's based on the taxes we have right now.
Correct.
If we have a bigger tax base, if some of these hotels, not the rubber construction, they start paying taxes, this could even be in credit, am I assuming saying that?
Then the impact would be less.
I don't know if it'd be in a credit position, but it would be less than what, what we're projecting.
So this is, this is the maximum impact, then?
It's the maximum impact based on today's, today's tax rates and tax levy, and, and also, too, it's based on the projects that are in front of you. As you recall, with the Arena project, there are, there are other sources of revenue that we were using to offset the debenture payment, and we're also looking at some consolidation when you go from three sites to four sites and revenue opportunities. So if, if everything comes together as we see, that would be the maximum impact.
Do you have every confidence that these numbers are quite accurate?
Based on the information that we have today, they're as good as we can project.
Counselor Iannone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have three binders in front of me, one I just got, because I didn't have the proper numbers before. So rather than go through them, I'm just going to ask staff questions. When we, when I, when we were asked to shift this to replace this, and I did the comparison, I just wanted to know why some of the numbers were different. In the roads, in the, in the expenditures we had prior, in roads, we were spending 11, 189, 264. In this roads, the new ones in 2008, we're doing 9,972,961. What did we shift? And just before we have staff answer this, sewers is also down a couple of million dollars. Water, water is down, sanitary sewers are down. I want, what are we giving up to when we're shifting that down for '08?
Okay, Mr. Harrison.
To you, to Counselor Iannone. We're not giving up anything. In fact, a couple of weeks ago, I believe, there was a report that came in on the KLR Road project that came in under, under, under budget, like what we had estimated. The numbers that you had previously reflected the higher cost to do that job, and that's the biggest item, that's the reason for that. There has been some shift in years based on our further reevaluation. If you recall, when we started commencing doing this budget, it was back in October, and we, last year, and we have some better, better ideas on what costs had come in at. So there, any of the reductions that you're talking about reflect items that we actually came in with lower amounts, not, not canceling any projects.
That's good to see. Under debenture for 2008, we had 690,979, and in the updated one, we have zero. How did that, how did it go from almost 700,000 to zero? And where'd we get it?
We, based on the length of time that it's taken to pass the capital budget, we have deferred issuing debentures on some of the projects, and that's the only thing. So we are carrying those costs until next year, at which time we'll be debenturing. Particularly, there was items in the fire area that we were going to debenture, and I believe there was items in transportation. But those are the two items that had 690,000.
But those are the two items that, 690,000, we've extended to 2000, and we'll be going out for a debenture in 2009.
Okay.
So if that's going to debenture for 2009, that's absorbed in the 3,005,000 that's sitting there now? 3.5 million? In this updated?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And one more question, Mr. Chair. If we pass this budget as it's before us, are we passing an eventual 67 million dollar debt? This is a five-year budget, I just look at the end of the line, and the end of the line says 67,244 debt.
As the presentation showed, the projects that are on board, if you were to do all of the projects, the total debt that we would require to issue, based on today's information, is 67 million dollars. I think, as you saw, the next slide that's now up there is, it shows that of that 67 million dollars, 45 million dollars relate to these three projects. And so, I mean, certainly, the four-pad arena is a large portion of that, and that's been a subject of much discussion, and then the two other items. So, 45, roughly two-thirds of what the debenture is.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, the motion on the floor is to approve all Category 1 projects. Motion made by the mayor, seconded by Counselor DiOdatti. Any questions to the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? One opposition with Counselor...
No, no, I'm in favor.
I'm sorry. It's approved unanimously.
Hold my nose.
What I'd like to do now is open up discussion on Category 2 projects, and there's a number of them listed in our binder, and staff did a good job of listing them under high priority, medium priority, and low priority. Does anyone wish to open discussions? Counselor Iannoni.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As we go through high priority, low priority, I kind of went wishlist, not wishlist, and when you went through things, my mindset is if it's cosmetic, you cut it, if it's not mandatory, and I rarely look at cutting anything through the fire department, and I'm specifically glad to see that they have an update in their radio system, because that's crucial. But I really don't think the $100,000 renovation to Station 3 is not something that we could put, that we have to do. To me, that's not as crucial as the rest of them sitting in there, and I'd like to see us pull that out until we actually have money to do the wishlist, and to me, cosmetics is wish.
Okay, there are a bunch of other low priorities in there. Just wondering if there is discussion on any low priority items? In all the departments, actually?
Category 2.
Category 2. Department, department? Oh, I was talking specifically about Category 2 projects. Department, department is going to take a long time. Mayor Salsi.
Well, Mr. Chair, I think we've heard that the Morrison Street rail grade might be premature, and the fact that maybe some concurrence with looking at the alternate resolution, and maybe we should look at that category, that item number 2, $11 million, and putting that on hold until day-to-day. We're not going to spend $100,000 in engineering costs this year, nor the construction costs beyond that, so maybe we should set that back a bit and decrease the importance until we find the alternatives and the cost later too.
Okay. And I think what we did, Counselor Thompson, was express our wish from a couple people to staff, but no formal motion has been made. Would anyone like to make a motion, then? Motion by Mayor Salsi?
I'll move that.
To put the project on hold, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Is there any discussion to the motion? We're talking about the Morrison Street, or rail, sorry, rail grade separation? Seeing no comments, all those in favor? Opposed? One opposition, Counselor Iannoni. In fairness to Counselor Iannoni, I'll accept your motion to put on hold the renovations for Station 3, listed as a low priority under Fire Services. Do I have a seconder to that motion? Seconded by Counselor Wing. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Counselor Thompson is opposed. Motion is carried. Are there any other comments in regards to Category 2 project priorities? Counselor Wing.
Under Transportation Services, we're looking at traffic calming for Swayze, Nassau, and Langrenner. I know up above, we've already approved traffic calming for Beaver Valley, Preakness, Calhoun. I'm not even sure about the street there, LeMans, just wanted... Are we serious about continuing with traffic calming? We found out with Woodbine that it doesn't really work. Just, you know, the question, where are we at with the traffic calming? Okay, I'll move that, we take over the traffic calming items.
Okay, I think Mr. Dren would still like to give a comment to your question.
Just in response to traffic calming, I guess, prior to, about two years ago, we had to go through the EA process, and as a result of that, it was a higher expenditure of funds. What the budget shows is $30,000 that's in the operating budget. I've cut out for both projects, the one that's in Category 1, as well as this one, any debentures, any expenditures of that nature, and I think it would be tricky in some cases, and in particular, just thinking of one that comes to mind, which is the Nassau situation, that it has only one intersection there, and if you were to put a four-way stop, and only a four-way stop there, it wouldn't resolve the speeding issue or the cut-through issue, and therefore, you know, that would impact that one in particular. But again, staff is going to bring back a report, a made in Niagara Falls report dealing with traffic calming, always stops and so forth, that this council can endorse and look at.
Okay. You still have the floor.
Okay, is it, I'm just trying to figure whether we should proceed with this motion or should withdraw it. I mean, obviously, we do have traffic problems in the city there, you know, we've all had complaints about speeding. I'm not sure how to address the problem. You know, the traffic calming measures we've been implementing have been woefully inadequate. Woodbine, we found that four-way stops were all those needed, so, I mean, I don't want to take things out that we need to be doing. Nassau is a particular case, so I don't know, perhaps, we could get some more advice from staff on how much we should leave in for this.
Okay, I have a bunch of people that wish to speak. Is it on the same issue?
Yeah.
On the same issue? Go ahead.
Thank you. I think we started looking at this when you kept watching the Toronto Star series on how their traffic calming, speed humps, speed bumps weren't working. They're taking them out, not only are they destroying the plows and the fire trucks, they just weren't working. I, and while I understand we passed Category 1 and one fell swoop, as I held my nose, traffic calming Beaver Valley, Preakness, Calhoun, above in part 1, did not have a reason under it why project cannot be stopped. So if we're looking at stopping traffic calming, Janice says we passed one above, I didn't realize that one did have not, it doesn't even say a percentage completed. They're not working. We learned that on Woodbine, we learned that in every other municipality paper that we're reading. I really think it's a waste of our money. I know, we asked Mr. Dren to do it, and he brings a report, we either don't do it, and it's kind of a waste of time, but I think we have places where that money can be better spent.
Okay, I have Counselor Fisher and Counselor Maves that wishes to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. About Nassau, I spoke to Carl and the people on Nassau, and I'm not sure if all of you know where Nassau is.
Sure do.
It's right off Maya Creek, close to Sodom Road. It has become a shortcut for all the people who are using the arena, it has become a real traffic problem, especially in the winter, and possibly, a lot of it is to do with the people who have automobiles now, with roadmaps, which tell them, use Nassau, instead of going to the corner and making the trip up to the arena. So possibly, if we could get someone to change the mapping in the vehicles, I know, that's a difficult job, but, you know, that's mainly, one of the biggest problems we have is the mapping. That's why they're all using it, they're all from out of town, coming in, making the shortcut, because they think that is the route to go to the arena. So other than that, yes, we're having a serious problem there, even though we have police officers right at the corner.
Okay. And I know we have a good IT department, but that's quite a request. Counselor Maves.
I'm just wondering, we passed all the greens, I want to, if we can, just invoke all the reds, is that possible?
Actually, Counselor Maves, we did not pass all the greens, we passed all the Category 1 projects. The greens here are still Category 2 projects, they're just listed as high priorities by staff.
Okay, but I'm just wondering, the reds that are in the...
Are all low priorities.
Right, I'm just wondering, we just can't invoke, just dump all those?
And I think at this point, any motion can be put on the floor.
There is a motion on the floor right now? For Swayze and Nassau? About taking out the traffic calming items?
Nassau? Janice, I don't think she wants to.
Well, it's on the floor unless it's withdrawn.
Okay. Counselor Wing, did you still wish the motion to be on the floor to withdraw the traffic calming?
Perhaps we could amend it and leave Nassau, if there's a big problem with Nassau, obviously, we have to do something to work on.
Traffic calming will be solved?
I don't know what the situation for Nassau is, but I'm very familiar with the street, and I can very much appreciate the problem they're having. We need to do something. I don't know if traffic calming is going to be the answer, though, so if it's not, then let's leave the motion as is and find something else.
Okay, I think Mr...
Not a through-street signs or something.
I think Mr. Dren would like to address it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Basically, if I can suggest that, you know, anything we do, traffic calming, we bring it forward to council and say, this is what we plan to do before we do debt.
Sure.
And therefore, no money spent, nothing's done with it until we already give a plan and say, here's what we want to do, and we have requests from the residents, and we want to deal with it.
That's a very good idea, so approve them on request. So in other words, then I would need a motion to remove it. So a motion from Counselor Wing to remove it from the budget. Do I have a seconder? Counselor Iannoni? Any questions or comments to remove the traffic calming? And then issues will be brought forward by staff. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried? Thank you.
Can I have just a clarification to that?
I actually have Counselor Maves, that I accepted his motion, but was told that there is another motion on the floor, so I'd like to go back to Counselor Maves' motion. Counselor Maves made a motion to approve the removal of all low priority projects in Category 2, and I'm wondering if there's a seconder to that motion. Counselor Carroll, are you seconding it?
Yeah.
Counselor Carroll would second that. Are there any questions or comments? Mayor Salsi.
Just a point of clarification, does that include the museum board? We should just call upon that before the museum board.
Not in the Category 2.
Okay, let's make sure that that happens.
Okay, absolutely. Counselor Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This I would like to ask Mr. Holman. I notice in here is the Warren Creek watershed. How will that affect the project?
Mr. Chair, we have Warren Creek watershed project on sheet 77A. Requires some funding, complete all the approvals in coordination with the pending development in that area for an existing planned subdivision. So it is important that we continue with that process, if not, possibly, we could employ certain sub-projects. Our preference will be to continue on with the design this year, all the approvals, and then deal with the land acquisition and construction.
So this is one of the very important parts of that big project out there, so I can't support that unless we can take that particular one out of your motion.
Okay, are there any other comments? I have Counselor Wing that's been waiting, and then Counselor Iannoni.
Yes, I need clarification. I want to know what the low priority projects, the Category 2 are.
Low priorities?
Projects, I know each of them.
Under Fire Services, renovations to Station 3 have already been removed. Under Municipal Works, there's two, there's Shriners Creek retaining wall, and there's Warren Creek watershed. Under Transportation, there's one, traffic calming, that's already been removed. Use this binder here. Flip the sheet. Yep. Okay, right there it starts. Right there it starts. And then if you go over to Parks and Rec, there's actually two properties, the CB Wright Park Trail connection, and also the Millennium Trail. So in total, I believe that there's six projects, and two of them, by way of motion, have already been removed. So really, it's the two projects under Municipal Works, Shriners Creek and Warren Creek, and the two projects under Parks and Rec, CB Wright and Millennium Trail, that the motion is making reference to. And I understand we have people over here that want to speak, I'm just letting them have the floor. Okay? I have Counselor Iannoni next, and then Counselor Fisher.
You know, I have to find your first, because I, excuse me, but I'm really confused here.
Okay.
If I could just suggest, because I appreciate that, because number mine, but I would suggest what we're following now is the white binder.
Correct.
And it's, in fact, we're still in the introduction where that summary exists, where it's color-coded and summarized, so it's easy to focus in on those parts.
Correct.
Exactly as you have right now.
It's the four pages before tab 1, Counselor Iannoni.
If I could also, Mr. Chair, just ask, when a decision is made on these projects, is the suggestion that we simply defer them from Category 2, basically into Category 3, so that they will come back next year as a way to reconsider?
Yes.
So we're not eliminating them?
No.
We're saying, we're not doing it in '08?
Correct.
We'll bring it back in a future year.
Correct.
Correct, that's what I want to do.
I'm sorry, what was that, future or...
Any motions made to take them out of this project, or sorry, out of this capital budget would mean that they would go into our 2009 capital budget, unless council decided to pull them out again. Okay, I have Counselor Fisher that's been waiting to speak, and then I'll come back to you.
I know there's a motion on the floor, but I would like to take away from the motion and leave it in the budget, the Warren Creek watershed, because it really is very important to the project that is under construction, so I would like that to remain in the budget.
I will ask the mover and seconder if that's a friendly amendment?
Question.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Well, my question would be, it's in the low priority.
Right.
Is this going to slow the project down? If we move that part of the Warren Creek job back, is that going to slow the project down? Is that going to stop the project? If it is, then why is it in the low priority list?
Well, it's not, Mr. Chairman, it's important because we want to do it this year, but compared to the other priorities that we have on the list, I guess, that's one thing that we have to consider. It is important that we finish the intel design at least, so we can get all the approvals necessary, so that we can finalize, how to develop, and what we need to add some to it.
Does that answer your question, Counselor Carroll? Okay. Does the mover agree to the friendly, does the mover and seconder agree to the friendly amendment?
I'm going to leave that one in, fine, but we're just going to spend the money, we're just going to take it over this year. Anyway, I'll take it up, it's fine.
Okay. So the motion has been amended, then, to include the two projects then under Municipal, or sorry, the one project under Municipal Works, Shriners Creek, the retaining wall, and also the two projects under Parks and Rec, the CB Wright Park Trail connection and the Millennium Trail. And I have Counselor Wing and Counselor DiOdatti that wish to speak.
Thank you. CB Wright, I know I've been involved in this effort for a few years, there's a parent on Atlantis, who is basically speaking on behalf of herself and the parents of a number of other children in the area. The kids use that trail to cut through to Father Hennepin. The alternative is a very long way around, and there's some really busy traffic, I know it's wide along Atlantis, there's not enough sidewalks there, it's a dangerous situation, I've experienced that with staff before as well, but the kids get muddy going to and from the schools, it's only $32,000, and I don't know if the rest of you are as familiar with Atlantis as I am, but there is, there are a lot of families there, there's a lot of young kids, so I know that she will be extremely disappointed if we don't proceed.
Why don't you just load on all four separately?
Yeah. Dean just gave me a good idea, perhaps we should just take the motion separately for each of the four projects that are here under low priority. So, I'm not sure if that's what council wishes to do, but I have Counselor DiOdatti that wishes to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's probably not such a bad idea. My comments were in regard to the Millennium Trail. I have two sites to this. Number one, I'd like to get some input from our Director of Parks Recreation, about some expenditures for this year. I'm curious to know what we're committed to, are we going to be leaving piles of stone on these trails that we've already committed to the residents? The second question will be through you, Mr. Chair, to our Director of Planning. I know we had asked staff at our last meeting to investigate with the developers on Oakwood and Cloud Road, the idea of moving the bike trail onto that section of the Millennium Trail. I wonder how that might impact or interface, and what the status is. I'm not comfortable just wiping it off, but it's some discussion. So if I could direct those through you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Ms. Marcy.
Through the chair, I'll address the first question. Regarding Millennium, it's already stated that the premise... Uh, regarding Millennium, it's already stated that the premise was that it was a deferral for reconsideration in 2009. The challenges that we're having with the current section, which is section four, uh, running up from Morrison to Thorlstone are not due to the construction schedule, but due to third-party relationships, and those unfortunately continue. Uh, there's new risk, risk management issues with OPG and Hydro One, and our, our most recent meeting was in May, and we're still looking at the legal issues with their solicitor. So we're suggesting that even from the moment that council approves, uh, once we have an agreement, it's still going to be three to four months before the construction. Um, so we were suggesting that due to the timeline of the budget in O eight and due to the other issues that we're facing, that we low-prioritize it, uh, for a timing issue to defer that back for your reconsideration. Uh, it's likely even if you approved it in this capital, by the time we got that legal agreement for land use in place, we still would be functionally in 2009's fiscal by developing it, so that's why it's there. Um, for Counselor Diodati, your question regarding, uh, the Millennium consideration from the smart centers, the staff is preparing a report and it will be anchored heavily back with the regional growth plan, with the transportation studies for the requirement of bike lanes on, uh, roadways for points of safety, and we'll be addressing all of those questions probably in the next, uh, next two councils with respect to follow-up on that particular issue. And if I've missed anything, and while I'm up, I might as well comment on CB Wright for Counselor Wing. Um, and I just wanted to preface the footnote that while we projected thirty-two thousand, which is double what last year, we have not consulted with the school in terms of cost sharing on that. And also similar to Millennium, we're now entering third-party agreements there. Um, we would have to have easement and lease agreements, and we project that it would be a minimum of seven thousand dollars potentially, plus annual costs, and we would have to come back on another, uh, cost for you to consider, uh, just to get that, uh, two hundred feet of trail put in place.
Counselor Diodati.
If I could just, on that last comment of CB Wright, it might make sense to, uh, not make any decisions until the final results of the Board of Education, they have an art committee right now, and as one of the schools that has been considered for recommendation to possibly be amalgamated. Um, and, um, back to the original point of Millennium Trail, um, I understand what you said, so in the meantime, I know we've been kind of stalemated with regard to OPG and Hydro One, are we looking at any other sections right now or are we just going to kind of keep spinning in this one?
Uh, through the chair, currently we're working on section four. Uh, section three, which will be the next section, would go from, uh, Thorlstone to Whirlpool, that will be even unfortunately more problematic because we enter another phase of land ownership in that section, so we're not considering building that currently. We're currently focused on section three, and as you write, we're sort of in a holding pattern, unfortunately, still on that particular area. Uh, through Trails and Bike Way though, the good news is that we have focused in on other connectivity in the community that's far more achievable at a lower cost potentially because there's no fencing requirements, there's no risk management issues associated with high-power corridors for power, and we think that there is potential, and, uh, actually it was Counselor Anoni who had asked us months ago to start working towards alternative planning in addition to Millennium, and we are working towards that.
Okay, Counselor Maves.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I think there's a misunderstanding here. I'm not trying to veto any of these.
No, no.
I'm just trying to move them to 2009 or something.
Yep.
Get out of this year's budget.
We understand that. Counselor Carrion?
And it sounds like the staff's already done their homework, that's why these projects are put into the low category.
That's correct.
If we're just going to continue to go through this, we're already at 3.35 increase, we're just going to go through this and keep wanting to put all our pet projects back in, the, the, the tax base is going to go off the wall.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor then to, uh, take out of the 2008 capital budget, um, the three projects listed, uh, Shriners Creek retaining wall and also CB Wright Park Trail Connection and the Millennium Trail. There is a motion on the floor that has been seconded. Are there any questions or comments to the motion? Take them out of the 2008 budget, yes. Seeing no questions, all those in favor? Opposed? No one's opposed. Motion is carried. The only other items we have to deal with then are the medium priorities and the high And perhaps we could open up discussion on those. If there is no discussion, then we'd be looking for a motion to approve them all. Counselor Wing.
I am sorry, I'm still stuck in these green pages, which is what we seem to start off working through. Um, under the category two projects there, Gardner Park Development at a hundred and seventy-six thousand, I know when I read through the prioritization binder, there didn't seem to be an urgency for that one. Uh, I was wondering how badly we needed to update our city welcome sign.
I think the Gardner Park Development is listed as a high priority. The city welcome sign is listed as a medium priority.
Okay, I, I understood one of the main problems with the city welcome sign was it had the old logo on it, uh, I don't think that really, to me, that doesn't really matter. It's not a huge make or break thing. In terms of people coming here, they're, they're already here when they're passing that sign. And category two projects, uh, Armory Elevator was in there too, three hundred thousand. You know, if we're not, if we're going to slow down on some of the other stuff with the armory, then we don't need to rush with the elevator.
Okay. And I think the, uh, the Armory project, it was agreed to by staff in, in a previous motion, that staff would be bringing any expenditures forward, that all of the armory expenses were taken out already. That was by way of motion by yourself. For the armory, I, I think it was agreed, um, that staff would be bringing any, any future expenditures back to council instead of including them in the capital budget. That was one of the very first motions tonight. That was one of the very first motions, instead of including them in this capital budget. Am I, am I dreaming?
Did he not say that he would bring all his funding to his staff?
He's, he stated that, but there wasn't a motion.
You sure?
Yes. I've got the motions, it was only four of them.
I'm positive there was.
Mr. Chair, when you give us so much information, just hold it there.
I, I'm, I'm positive that there was.
Read your reminders.
I know. Okay, we're still dealing with, uh, medium priority and high priority items listed under category two, yes. So, again, if there's any discussion on any, I welcome the discussion. If not, then I would be looking for a motion to approve all the rest of the category two projects. Counselor Diodati.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to touch, uh, just my opinion differs slightly from that of Counselor Wing's in regard to the, the welcoming sign. That sign, uh, getting up too close to it, there's chunks falling off of it, and, uh, it's in need of upgrading. Half the time, the lights, the way the configuration, the plants have overgrown, uh, it's not a major item, it's less than, uh, uh, the, the one part that we were just discussing. And you get one chance at a first impression. It's your first introduction to, uh, people, and as well, our other idea is, it's the people not necessarily coming to Niagara Falls, they're going through Niagara Falls, and anything that I think we can do to give a, a positive, uh, welcoming perception, I think we should capitalize on it. It's not a major expense, so I, I would hope that that would stay in there.
Okay, thank you. Just to give council an update, of the, uh, of the seventeen million, um, of expenditures that are listed under, uh, under category two, council has so far cut out seven hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Just an update. Seven hundred and eighty-two thousand of the seventeen, of the seventeen point one five million. Counselor Maves.
I'm just looking in here, have we passed all the greens on the category two?
No, we have not.
Okay, uh, just to speed things along, I think anything in the, uh, in the green in category two that has to do with sewer reconstruction or anything like that, is there any way we can pass those in bulk? Because I think these are very vital and necessary, and maybe we can pass a lot of those in bulk, get the, get those underway rather than individually?
I, I think you're looking under municipal works?
Yes.
And I think it would probably be quite easy to identify which ones, um...
If we can do that, I'd, I'd like to make that a point, that would speed things along because...
Okay.
I think we have a lot of money in the budget for that, and I think we could, uh, hurry things up.
I'd like to ask, uh, perhaps Mr. Holman or Mr. Dulevik if they could identify the ones listed under green that would fall into either water or sewer?
Correct.
Public Works Program, Mr. Chair, uh, the Green Maintenance Program, it's the, uh...
Drain Maintenance Program?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Uh, that's, uh, the water and sewer, um, yeah, so, uh, Kaila Road, um, Kaila Lockon Station, that, uh...
Correct.
Water main replacements.
Correct.
Uh, Sewer Program, which is a, uh, this may be, uh, one of the other, uh, projects.
Correct.
Water new drives, uh, to a sewer repair project.
Correct.
Water main replacement program, and the, uh, one of the water main replacements is a, uh, is, uh, water main off the way to the bridge.
Okay, these are projects, Counselor Maves, that you're, that you're wishing to make a motion to approve?
Can I, can I make that motion and pass all?
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay.
What is, what is on the question?
There were seven projects on there and I'll, and I'll read them out for you again.
There are other priorities there too, uh, it's a street cul-de-sac, uh, that's not a...
There are other high priority projects, that is not the counselor's motion though. Counselor is working, counselor is wishing to make a motion to approve all the high priority projects that deal with water and sewer infrastructure.
Well, I, I, uh, I can change, I can change that and do all the green ones if that makes it easier.
Would you like to amend your motion? Okay. Okay, so motion to approve all the category two high priority projects?
Correct.
Is that in every, is that in every department, Counselor Maves? Because right now I'm looking at municipal works and I'd like to know if that's in all the departments.
My, my, municipal works, that's what I'm looking at.
You're looking at municipal works, okay. So you're making a motion to approve all the high priority items in municipal works listed under category two. Do I have a seconder to that motion? Seconded by the mayor. Are there any questions or comments to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motions carried. All the green projects in municipal works have been approved. Okay, we're still looking for discussion on, I guess, the high priority items in the other three departments that we have, fire services, transportation, parks and rec, and also the medium priority items in all four, in all four departments. Counselor Carrion?
Motion I'd move out the high priority in the fire budget.
Okay, motion to approve the high priority in the fire budget by Counselor Carrion, seconded by, um...
Number one.
Yeah, it's the very first page. Actually, it's, it's before tab one, Counselor Anoni. If you go to the four pages before tab one, I think that's what everyone is referencing. There you are, you have them now. One more. Okay. Okay, there is a motion on the floor made by Counselor Carrion, seconded by Counselor Fisher, to approve all the high priority items under fire services. Counselor Thompson, please.
Yeah, just a question, uh, regarding priorities, uh, through you to the chief, uh, the renovations to Station Three were, I don't...
They were already taken out.
Previously. Um, is there a, do you have any feelings for that? I've, I've been to Station Three, uh, needs a lot of help. Um, the command vehicle, is that a higher priority than the, uh, Station Three comfort center?
Uh, the, uh, first of all, Station Three renovation was originally, um, put in at seven hundred and fifty thousand. We just cut back to a hundred thousand dollars. There was going to be an expansion.
Were you going to buy new bed sheets or something?
I guess that may be included, but, uh, it was actually due to, uh, give a larger, um, area in the building, so to reduce that, to not expand the building and just do some renovations inside to, uh, improve air quality and, uh, separate the male, female washers.
But, uh, they've cut it out, isn't that fairly high priority?
Uh, operationally, um, it's not our highest priority items. We, you know, I've really tried to rely on, on our operational issues to, uh, remain in the high priority and everything else, trying to move it down a little bit.
Okay, so you're satisfied with that?
Um, we can come back, uh, with, uh, in our next budget with that.
Okay, Mayor Selsey.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is also a question to the chief with respect to the, uh, radio system. We are looking at then a hundred thousand dollars we spent in 2008, and then there, there beyond that, two, two point one million. Uh, I'd like to ask the chief with respect to the hundred thousand dollar expenditure this year, if he can just elaborate what that might be?
Uh, through the chair, the hundred thousand dollar expenditure is to hire a project manager and start to get, um, everything in line to actually move forward with the project, and there would have to be selection of a, a provider, and, and there's quite a bit of work that is involved in that. That would be stopped through the remainder of this year.
Mayor Selsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just through you again, uh, to, to discuss this further than if there are going to be any synergies with respect to the system in the future with other services or other providers of emergency services, uh, would that be affected by, would the hundred thousand dollars be affected by the, uh, that change or that direction we might take in the future?
Through the chair, um, I don't believe it would be affected by it, but you may actually assist in that because we'll be looking at any kind of efficiencies through that, uh, project manager, who are actually undertaking, uh, his role prior to contracting with someone to provide the service and, and the equipment.
And, Mr. Chair, again, just a supplement to that, then just to say, the hundred thousand dollars would be well spent this year with respect to where we might go in the future. I, I believe it is. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Okay, there is a motion on the floor to approve all the high priority items under fire services. If, seeing that there's no questions or comments to the motion, all those in favor? Opposed, motions carried. We've dealt with high priority now in two different departments, fire services and municipal works, looking for some direction in transportation services and parks and rec. Counselor Maves.
I'm aware on the subject of fire services, the only thing we haven't approved is a command vehicle.
That's correct.
What can we deal with that, uh, perhaps, and, uh, perhaps the chief can tell us, is that, uh, necessary? If we have one now, is it to be...
Through the chair, the, the command vehicle is, uh, for actually the platoon chief, who, uh, uh, is supervisor on duty at all times. They run, uh, Fort Expedition right now, and we plan on a five-year, uh, replacement plant for it. It's in pretty good shape right now, but it is, uh, it's run very hard, it's got a lot of equipment in it, and it obviously has to respond to, uh, uh, majority of the emergency calls that, uh, that we have, so, um, if we were to postpone it, I wouldn't want to postpone it for too long. I mean, uh, if we went to the next year's, uh, um, pledge, if it was early in next year, we should have, uh, should be able to achieve that.
So if we move that to next year, that'd be fine with you?
Yes.
I'd love to make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Maves. I have a seconder to the motion, to delay the command vehicle till 2009, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Any questions or comments to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motions carried unanimously. We've completely dealt with fire services. We only have high priority in transportation and parks and rec left. Hasn't been a lot of money yet.
What do we have, category two transportation?
The only thing that we haven't dealt with yet is we haven't dealt with medium priority in municipal works and both medium and high priority in transportation and parks and Counselor Wing.
I'll move the medium priority municipal works projects.
You're moving all of them?
Which kind of work, I'm sorry?
In municipal works.
Medium priority municipal works.
The only one, Counselor Wing, that that wouldn't include would be the Morrison Street rail grade separation, which has already been removed in a previous motion. There is a motion on the floor to approve the balance of the yellow-coded items under There is a motion on the floor to approve the balance of the yellow-coded items under Municipal Works Category Two, which are listed as medium priority by Counselor Wing. Do I have a secondar to the motion? Seconded by Counselor Einoni. Is there any questions or comments to the motion? Counselor Maves.
Montrose Business Park, can I have someone elaborate on what that entails? That's $760,000.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Montrose Business Park, we're planning to extend the services to the lots that we created to make it easier to sell. Some of the work, engineering work, started to be done, but we're going to physically.
Counselor Carrio.
Do we have any other lots for sale right now that are serviced?
Dean.
I'd just also remind council that we did identify that as part of our submission for the police headquarters, that that park would be serviced by the end of the year.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments to the motion, Counselor Diodati?
Yes, Mr. Chair, question, both vehicle replacement, we've got a couple million dollars there, maybe we can get a little bit of elaboration on that one.
Absolutely. Counselor Carrio.
My question is then, if they're in the middle priorities, could some of that be put back to 2009? I mean, I think that's why you did this, so that you're leaving us some opportunities to move some things back a bit. Is that not the idea?
Yeah.
If it is, are there some of those 2,000, or 2,190,000 expenditure that you could suggest that we might be able to put back one season? That we could get away with what we have for one more year?
I would recommend it. Remember, with those we have with equipment and the last winter. We can use spares and we can do what best, we have excellent mechanics who keep our equipment on the load, have a loss of confidence in their abilities, but we're taking a real risk by not replacing the equipment that we have now. As you may recall, our owner maintenance policy, we review the top of equipment that was twenty years old.
Okay, are there any other comments to the motion, then? There is a motion on the floor to approve all the medium priority items listed under Municipal Works, with the exception of the rail grade separation on Morrison Street. Seeing as there's no other comments, I guess I'll give my comments, I am going to vote against the motion, and I'll give my reasons why, I mean, I personally appreciate the exercise that staff has gone through in order to, I guess, outline what the high priority, the medium priority, and the low priority items are. Personally, I think that if we add the impacts of category one and category two together, then we're looking at just over an eight percent increase by 2010, which I believe is too much. I think that was the whole reason why we started down this road, and if we take a look at Municipal Works, Municipal Works has the largest budget out of any department that we're dealing with, so this would have been the area that I would have been supportive of any cuts. With that, then, seeing as there's no other comments, I'll call the motion.
Well, I agree with your comments.
Counselor Thompson.
So what are your suggestions as far as further cuts?
Yeah, I mean, I personally believe that that's why we went through the exercise, was to find out what the high priority and the medium priority items are, so perhaps we can see where the motion goes, and then take it from there. Counselor Carrio.
That's where I was going with my line of questioning, I was assuming that the reason that the staff prioritized this this way was to leave us some room, to push some things back, put some things off, so I'm not going to support the motion either, otherwise, we're just going to support everything in the book.
Exactly.
As well just to make a motion, pass it, and all got home a long time ago.
Right. Counselor Einoni.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This has been a really difficult exercise to follow, we were given one budget with addendums to put in and take out. My sheets weren't correct, so I was handed a new one downstairs while I was chairing a meeting, so can't see it this. We're not even using what I was just giving, we're using this. I agree, it's still too high. When we look at vehicle replacement, and you go to the explanation in here, it doesn't even give us an explanation of what the 2.1 million is. Maybe we would cut out $500,000 worth of the 2.1 vehicles if we actually knew what the vehicles were. It's not explained in the white information packet, it's not explained in our high priority, and it's not explained here. So when we say you came up with a priority system, I mean, in the end, it's ours to cut. Thank you for Mr. Holman's answer, but maybe we'd have taken out a million of that, if I'd have actually known what vehicles we were cutting. So I don't have enough information to slash from that one, but I certainly think that we really need to, if this is what we gave them for, the hard decisions are ours. I mean, it might be a secondary priority for our staff, but it's, our priority is more to cut what we're going to put out to the residents. There's not enough explanation in this. I know you tried to give us as much as there is, but just pinpointing this one alone, if there are 12 vehicles made up in the 2.1 million, I'd have liked to know what six we could cut.
Okay, Counselor Wing, please.
If you look at the reasons, or the repercussions of delaying or deferring the projects for all these, there's good reasons for feuding with each of them. Beaver Dam's Road, the first one. Intermeasures are completed, however, risk of severe damage due to surface drainage outlet problems still exists. This is a combined sewer area, I'm sorry, I don't have problems separating sewers. Kater Road Reconstruction. I'm looking, if you continue on the pages following that, you'll find them. Continued complaints and safety risks, I mean, I'm sorry, but safety risks concern me. Montrose Business Park, we already went over, I'd like to have serviced industrial land, we're trying to attract industry here, or at least we say we're trying to. It's kind of difficult if your industrial land's not serviced. Morrison Street, okay, that one's already. New sidewalk construction. I'm just trying to find that one very quickly, you know, for all these, there's, I don't know if everybody else read the rest of this like I did, but there's reasons for keeping them in. Sinix Avenue Sanitary Sewer Gate, I don't have problems separating sewers. Structure rehabilitation of bridges and culverts, I'm certainly not going to vote against that. Surface treatment of roads, I mean, those are one of the major things that we get complaints about all the time. Vehicle replacement, we already dealt with. Yes, it's a lot of money, but these are the nuts and bolts, and these are the things that the citizens see every day, and we get the complaints about, and our roads, sewers, and water mains are really our basic infrastructure. We've got to take care of that.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Are there any other comments before I call the motion? Counselor Maves.
I just have one question with the vehicle replacement, the gain, it's 2 million, almost 2,200,000. Perhaps, and it is obvious, snowplows are very important, saw that last one. What's roughly the cost of a snowplow? Do you need two of them, say? So can you need at least two?
At least two, yes.
Now, the other vehicles that we're looking at, is there some leeway there? Can we maybe cut this down to half? Or cut it down to a million dollars, something like that? Is that possible?
I suppose. You're also dealing with equipment.
Well, what I mean is the vital pieces, what can we get away with vital pieces? Like, perhaps there's something that you give another year or so of a pickup truck or something like that, or maybe five of them, I don't know. But is there some leeway in that, in that figure?
Yeah, well, you know, I think that's, that's part of our job anyways, is to make sure we get the absolute most out of each.
On that point, Counselor Einoni.
Thank you, maybe then we're looking at this backwards. Maybe we should be saying, we'll take a million out of that, we'll reduce that to a million one, and you fill with a million one, what the priorities you believe you could fit in a million one. We don't have the layout on us, but maybe this is kind of the tail wagging the dog here. We'll give you a million one, put your priorities into that, but we won't give you 2,100,000. I mean, slashing a million one out of there, if you have an emergency situation where they have to come back for an amendment to us within the budget year, we get that all the time. But right now, I don't think I'm prepared to put 2.1 million into new vehicles, so I make a motion, we slash a million dollars.
Well, you already made a motion, right? It's your motion that's on the floor, to approve all the, all the medium priority.
Then I amend my motion and pass.
It's actually Janice's, but you seconded it.
Okay, can I do a friendly amendment, Mr. Chair?
You'd have to ask the mover of the motion, but I would imagine, yeah.
Okay, I will make the friendly amendment and ask the mover the motion. I'd like to reduce that to 1,100,009, and tell staff to make do and/or purchase the vehicles they put higher on their second priority list, which will save us a million dollars and not turn that to the taxpayers, and I put that out as a friendly amendment and hope Janice agrees.
I would ask the mover of the motion if that is a friendly amendment.
Since we have such excellent mechanics, and I know council is going to cut, I will accept that as a friendly amendment. I just want to say, I did find those others. New sidewalk construction that's due, the reason for that is pedestrian safety concerns. The surface treatment of roads is risk of deterioration causing more costly rehabilitation, and the one problem with the vehicles is breakdowns lead to loss of service, but if we want to take that risk, then let's take it.
Okay, thank you. I understand the motion then to be, to approve all the medium priority Municipal Works projects, with the exception of the Morrison Street rail grade separation, and also, with the exception of vehicle replacement, whereas the number will drop by 1,000,000. Does everyone understand the motion that's on the floor? Counselor Carrio, please.
Just to remind council that in every succeeding year, we're spending 1,122,000.
Correct.
Vehicles, to a total of 6,678,000 in five years.
Yep. Okay, does everyone understand the motion that's on the floor? Are any further comments to it? Seeing none, I'll call the motion, all those in favor? Opposed? Counselor Thompson and myself are opposed. We've entirely dealt with Municipal Works, with the exception of Warren Creek Watershed. We have not either approved or not approved it. That's the one outstanding category.
Do you still need a motion?
Yes, we do.
I will make the motion that we keep the Warren Creek Watershed in place, because that is the future of this production that is going to be moving forward this fall. So I think it's necessary to keep it there.
I have a motion by Counselor Fisher, do I have a secondar to that motion? Counselor Thompson? Are there any questions or comments, Counselor Einoni?
Mr. Chair, through you and staff, if it is crucial to the development out there, can we, a member of staff, could tell us why it was rated down in the bottom of the priority?
I'd ask Mr. Holman, who's already, I think, commented on it, to maybe give us a little more insight.
This project had started out a number of years ago as a water supply. Developments proceeded at the very top end, north end of Garner's, Garner Village, Martha McCloud. West Village. All stormwater is generated from that project, past travel south. McCloud going through the Warren Creek system. And we're at the state where we maxed out the amount of storage that we can place Martha McCloud over. So as we continue to get development applications, Deerfield, Edgewood, and subsequent phases, we're running a risk that we have a situation of the downstream work, there may be some flooding, rain extremes. The whole concept is to finish the design and provide the lands through development process, and in order to give those developers indication as to the equipment and channels required, the extent of the trial system that's being proposed, the design work. We have already engaged a consultant to help us with that process. There's still some additional work to do with respect to downstream developments, and by completing that work this year, we'll be able to complete the construction schedule.
Is that sufficient? Counselor Thompson.
Yes, just to follow through with Mr. Holman, the work we're doing at the Garner Southwest and Grassy Brook efforts and the capital works we're doing, that doesn't that fit in this? And that's how we intend to get some of our development charges back in? This is where we're going to get the money back for development charges.
Mr. McDonald.
Just a quick comment, just to clarify, and I alluded to it a little bit earlier. There is no projects listed in either the high, medium, or low priority that staff don't believe are important to go forward on. But, you know, we came up with this system, and it was a numbering factor involved, and because it's a tough question to answer, Counselor Einoni, you know, why is this one higher than the other? It's because of the way the weighting factors came in, and the numbers follow too. So, you know, staff, I'm sure, are sitting there thinking, they're sorry, they color this one that color, or whatever, but the fact is, that's how it came in on our categories. But staff are of the opinion, they're all important projects, and with the decisions to defer, you know, we'll have to make do. But I think if staff had their way, they would let all the projects approved. So it's just, it's really based on the criteria and the number factor, that's how it got to where it is.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Maves.
My question is, we're already halfway through the year, can it just be put to 2009? Keep asking that question, do you have any problem moving it to 2009?
Mr. Holman.
I guess. We could delay a lot of this stuff, but I think it's not, it's not a project that we can avoid, it's not something we'll scratch off the books. We just tend to consider all the power money and time already, the whole concept. And, you know, I guess why we consider it the lower priority of the top priorities is that there are issues that really affect public health and public safety. I guess when we get our ranking, that's a couple of the key criteria that are not satisfied with. Yeah, it's not going to affect anybody who's really in that area right now, that really does accommodate new development, but sets us back in the past.
Mr. Harrison.
I'd just like to jump in here for a second. You may recall how these projects are funded. This particular project is funded from capital. That means that monies have been allocated from the operating budget into the capital holding. The monies that are allocated for this year to spend in that particular account are already available. So in essence, the money is available to proceed with the project. Just a point of clarification.
Counselor Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just my understanding that this is very important because of what Counselor Thompson said. As soon as this can be completed, they can start their development, which will return to us development charges that we are looking for. So the revenue will be coming back in, and they would like to move forward this year. That is my understanding, am I right, Mr. Holman?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, motions carried, thank you. The only other items that we need to deal with, then, are under Transportation Services, both high priority and medium priority, and under Parks, Recreation, and Culture, the exact same, high priority and medium priority. Looking for either discussion or motion. Counselor Maves.
I'd like to move that we accept them all. In the yellow, there's only four of many, and one's already removed out.
You're on transportation only?
Yes.
Motion to approve the high priority and medium priority in Transportation by Counselor Maves, seconded by Counselor Wing. Do I have any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those, motions carried, thank you. Moving to Parks, Recreation, and Culture now. I have the two items listed under high priority, and the three items listed under medium priority. Looking for a motion or some discussion. Counselor Diodati.
Could you refresh my memory, see if you're right, did we make a decision on that one, or are we just having discussion?
No, we pulled that one.
Any other ones?
Till 2009, we pulled the Millennium Trail to 2009.
Sure, okay. I would move the remaining items.
Motion to approve the high priority and medium priority listed under Parks and Rec by Counselor Diodati, seconded by Counselor Fisher. And Counselor Fisher has a question, go ahead.
The Pet Cummings Sports Complex. Our chair of the Parks and Rec told me there was going to be some revisions there because of the lighting. Could you update me, please? Because this is a fairly significant amount of money.
Through the chair, under your briefing notes for Patrick Cummings, what we're recommending in assessment with our strategic plan is that the lights were based on demand. The lights were approximately about $700,000 of that budget. It has been a deferral for a number of years. In consultation with literally the Cummings family, we presented an option which we thought would be far greater as staff or the residents of Chippewa in that area. It is a highly dense area. So based on the Bain model of the splash pad and integrated playground, what we also did for, in partnership with the Lions, with the Cummings family, we overviewed what we thought would be a great park amenity, to make accessibility and use, something that that community would have. There was general agreement that that was a great idea, that we would defer the lighting until it was something that we could validate was necessary, especially with slow pitch use. The summary, I believe, was overviewed at a Recreation Committee meeting by Dan, and Don is actually here. And it was also incorporated in our budget for a consideration of you. It's not removing the lights, it's simply suggesting that they be reevaluated in the future. And at this time, the monies would be invested in a playground, fully handicap accessibility, as well as a splash pad for that part of the community going forward, as well as a better park development amenity off of line grinner and off of sod. And that's the heart of the park project that we outlined for you in this capital budget.
Thank you very much, because you did discuss to me that you had a discussion with the Cummings family and they were very agreeable. So thank you very much.
Okay, are there any other questions to the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the motion then. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. The only items then that we have not dealt with yet are the Category Three items, which include projects that begin in 2009 or later. Yes, Ms. McDonald?
I could just clarify one thing, because actually, there was one project that, and it's been referred a couple of times, but there wasn't a sheet put in the book, I would notice. And it's really to deal with the armory and so on. And back to your large binder, at the back of Tab One, the last green sheet, points to the armory elevated $300,000. And I think the general discussion was that we would defer that. We don't have any details on it yet anyway. So it is a Category Two item, and so I would request that Counsel give us some direction on that item.
Okay, I thought there was a motion on the floor to defer any armory expenditures and then bring them back to Counsel as they come. But I guess staff wants confirmation of that. So, motion by Counsel Ainoni, seconded. Looking to defer the expenditures on the armory so that they come back to Counsel for approval. Seconded by Counsel Diodati. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments to the motion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Counsel Thompson is opposed. Motion's carried. Thank you. The only item then that we have not dealt with yet is Category Three projects, and that includes projects that begin in 2009 or later. These projects would be presented to Counsel for future consideration and approval. Do we need a... Do we need a motion to approve these?
I think there's a motion that we defer the controls in 2012. How long is the mandate?
Under Tab Five then, in your binder, is all the Category Three, in the white binder now, in the new binder that you got?
Tab Five.
Under Tab Five are all the Category Three items. And I believe they're in the exact same department order. They start first with Fire Services, then go to Municipal Works, Transportation Services, and then finally Parks and Rec. Again, these are items that would come at a future date. I'm not quite certain that they actually need Counsel approval tonight. However, I think staff is looking for some direction as to whether or not these are the projects that we're going to be looking at.
For future years, we'll bring them back next year?
Exactly.
Motion?
Okay.
Will those come up for future years, bring them back?
Okay, there is a motion on the floor by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Fisher, that these projects remain as our future items that we're going to have staff look at, and that they come back for approval in a future year, which would be 2009. Mr. McDonald, do you like to comment to that?
I will do it as we've done in other years. It will be all listed, of course, from nine to 12, because they're part of our plan. But certainly, there's no money being committed at all to any of those items. But they will be listed, as well as, it will be amended to add those items that we defer tonight to Category Three.
So in other words, none of these items are approved, they're only approved as our priorities for future years. Counsel Ainoni?
I have a question. One of my concerns when we started the capital budget were the monies, I think it was $5 million over a few years for the downtown. Where is that? Are we still voting on that tonight? Or have we, with three different binders, passed something that I would have otherwise said no?
No, that, we had that discussion. The downtown has been put into, what we haven't got here would be Category Three. So it's on hold pending. There was further meetings, if I recall, back in January, there was a request for them to come back on some return on investment type of items. And everything was put on hold till that time. There is no expenditures planned for this year, and the monies that would be spent would start in 2009. And you'll have another opportunity to vote on that at that time.
So at this point, what was in our budget has now been deferred in regards to the downtown CIP. It's in your green binder under eight, where it was listed as one, starting in 2009, 1.2, 1.2, 1.2, 1.2. I have to say, I'm happy to see them come under the CIP facade and grant, which, how we, the intent we pass the CIP. But if there's no action taken on tonight, this gets a chance to be revoted on 2009. And none of this $5 million that's sitting here is being allocated to them. I want to clearly understand that when I sit down.
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. None of that money is committed to. It's, there's no new money in '08. The monies that we're spending now are from previous contributions. And the suggestion is it will show in the capital budget beginning in '09, but you will have to make a decision before any of that's spent going forward.
So that's an item that we can vote down next year?
Or increase, whatever you choose.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mayor Salsi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Perhaps we should qualify the cap required for the CIP facade improvements and where that's coming from?
The, that's an operating budget item, and that money is approved annually. And the items that are not spent in a year are carried forward and still available.
Okay. That's one we go to next. Okay, Mayor Salsi?
Mr. Chair, just to that point, I didn't want to give the signal to those who are anticipating getting involved with that facade improvement. I know we have a number coming forward in the next couple of months, or a couple of weeks, actually. So I didn't want to discourage them in regards of, I appreciate the qualification. And the fact that we have had an accumulation, I believe, from prior years when we did use that money, does the treasurer have a handle on it, or it might be at this point?
Off the top of my head, I don't, I don't know that, but I can get back to you immediately if you'd like a reporter.
Okay, Counsel Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A few weeks ago, we asked for a report to come back on the properties that the city owns that we could possibly have it for surplus and put it up for sale. I think it's very important that we look at that in the very near future. How much property do we own that we could put up for sale, surplus property? That would certainly help us with our budget.
Okay, I'll see if I can get your question answered, but then there is a motion on the floor dealing with the Category Three items, so I'll move on to that. Mr. McDonald, could you answer?
That's an item staff's dealing with. Of course, it's not on the agenda tonight, but as you'll recall from in-camera discussions earlier, we're already dealing with that and properties are coming forward. But we are doing a larger report to summarize that. But it's certainly not part of this evening's agenda.
Okay. Counsel Wing?
I just had a few concerns with putting some of these off. One of them, Category Three, is the FH Leslie pool liner. The notes we have is the old concrete pool has cracks and is leaking. Replacement of the pool liner has been put off repeatedly for many years. If not replaced, there will be increased operating costs for water repairs to the pool, et cetera. How long are we looking to put this off for? And just how bad is it getting?
I believe that all these items will be brought back in 2009, but I'll let Ms. Morsy talk about when she wants to bring that one back.
Mr. Chair, the reason that we placed it in an X priority was simply because of the timing this year. FH Leslie is one of the pools that we opened early this year. We originally opened this weekend. It's impossible for us to do the work unless we close the pool now. And doing it in September really doesn't help. So we, as staff, thought that by deferring it, it would assist the capital strain, and that was the reason. It does need to be done, but we'll certainly look at other alternatives as well, and whether other repairs can be done next year.
Okay, so there is a motion on the floor to approve all the Category Three items, just to simply give guidance to staff on what to use as their priorities for next year. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is unanimous. Thank you. I've been told by the clerk that we do not need a motion for CPS 2008-05 because we made so many motions dealing with the capital budget, I guess, leading up to it. So we'll move on to report CPS.
Receive and file that report.
Okay, we'll need a motion then to receive and file that report. Motion by Counsel Diodati, seconded by the mayor. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. We'll move on to CPS 2008-02, dealing with the Niagara Falls Board of Museums Legacy Project. And I appreciate that we have some members here, I guess, of the Board of Museums that have been waiting patiently to address us. And I was wondering, I guess, if Mr. West or Ms. Powell would like to address Counsel at all?
We actually came to watch Counsel in action.
Lucky you.
Over all of this, but also over our project. I guess you have all read the report in front of you. You've all had opportunities to discuss it. The, a couple of things that I've heard as I have gone through, Mr. Harrison, the treasurer did say something about return on investment. What we are offering you for the money that we are asking is $11.5 million against somewhat, something less than $2 million. And my days in retailing said that anything over 31% was really good. I think that we are offering you an opportunity for something in excess of 31% as far as that goes. We also have an opportunity to, if I may use something that Counsel Diodati said, which is, when 2012 comes, there will be things happening in Fort Erie, there will be things happening in Niagara in the Lake. We want, instead of people to drive through Niagara Falls, we want them to stop here because we're going to offer them something that is a world-class facility, and they will stop here instead of driving past during those three years. We believe that we have presented you with a project that will bring the people here. We are opening the gates once again of Niagara Falls to the world. As you know, there was more than just Canada and the United States involved in the war of 1812. And most of the then-world was involved everywhere, from Canada, the United States, First Nations, to Spain, to oceans. There were all kinds of people here and were interested in it. And we want to be there at the forefront. We want to be first rate. We want to present to the world what we can here. And we have that opportunity to do that. That's all I have to say. And thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mr. West. Okay, I have a few people that wish to speak. I have Counsel Thompson, Counsel Cariel, and Mayor Salsi.
Thank you. I can't tell you how many years we go back where we've talked about doing the renovations to the museum. And I think the plan that this committee and this group have brought forward is certainly amazing, but the financial aspects of it make it almost something that you can't look at in a negative light. We are going to have the focus on us in 2012 because this is, without exception, one of the most significant battles that have ever taken place in our country in our early years. And if we want to be, have that light shining on us in an appropriate way, I think it's incumbent upon us to move on with this project finally, after probably 15 years that I've seen it kicked around. So I think that the committee should be commended for getting $9 million towards this, if that's the way it works out. And our part is rather insignificant compared to that. But I think we have a responsibility for the heritage and historical aspect of our involvement in this community to support this. And I would be delighted to move a motion of support, move the adoption of the report.
Okay. Motion to accept the report by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Cariel. Well said, Counsel Thompson. I have Counsel Cariel, Mayor Salsi that wish to speak.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Counselor Thompson. I was going to move the report if you didn't. I like the ratio. If the city commits $2 million, they're going to raise $9.5 million. Those are the type of projects that you should participate in. The ratio is fantastic. They've done a tremendous amount of work, and I wish them luck in raising the other night $9.5 million. I'm glad to support the $2 million compared to the $11 million.
In terms of categories, I think those type of projects fall into the slam dunk category. So I have Mayor Salsi that wishes to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I just didn't want to repeat what the other speakers had mentioned, but I just talk about trade value for money, and I can't do anything but support this. I think it's certainly a worthwhile project. As you know, we have made presentations to both the federal and provincial governments, asking them to consider these projects as future budget items that will be coming forward for the celebration of the bicentennial of 2012, 2014. We have yet to receive any comments. As you know, we've made representation to both our NPP and our NP, as well as to various ministers at Niagara Day and the provincial level. So I would hope that we have some support and the encouragement that I would offer to the, to the members of the Niagara Falls Museum Board that will pursue this matter on both those levels of government as well.
Thank you, Mayor Salsi. I have Counsel Wing that wishes to speak, and then Counsel Diodati.
Thank you. And for those of us who met with the museum board, there's also the briefing notes they gave us. And in there, it points out that the architectural firm they hired estimates that the deteriorating condition of the building, which we own, will, within three to five years, require the city to invest $1.69 million to repair it, along with another $500,000 to make the building accessible. That is provincially mandated. We have no choice. So we're looking there at $2.2 million. We cannot avoid. The museum board is asking for us for less than that, and they're going to use that money to leverage other monies. I mean, this is a fabulous deal. Also, this is one of the three things identified in the historic Ramonville CIP, as being crucial to revitalizing the area, along with the streetscaping, which the VIA is taking care of in the market. So it's all coming together beautifully, and this is just a really wonderful project.
Okay, thank you. I have Counsel Diodati.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Counsel Wing just said exactly what I was about to say. It's a no-brainer. It's obvious we have to spend this money anyway. So instead of just spending the money to fix it up, we're going to get a brand-new facility with the help of this committee. It's great. We're celebrating the reason that we single candidate instead of start a spangled banner. I think it's a no-brainer.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Ainoni?
Thank you. Where are we getting the $2 million? Are we borrowing it?
Mr. McDonald?
Yes, we end up debenturing it. But just on that, though, I just wanted to clarify, this project is included within our Category Three. And what we're doing is, we're asking tonight for a sort of special approval on this one because it's required for the committee to go forward with a letter of support. So it's sort of a, it's sort of a three-plus category. But one of the questions I've showed, the answer is yes, it will be debentured for $2 million when the time comes, unless we can figure out some other way to fund it. And we have time to worry about that in terms of when we'd actually need to put up that money. What I, what I don't have clarification on, just on the funding, though, is that we have it in the budget to show no money until '09. And I vaguely remember some discussions about needing some money relative to planning and so on, actually, in the latter part of '08. And I just might, we might just want clarification from the committee. Right now, we don't have any money allocated to '09 and the bulk of the team in '10. So just a question on that.
And I just, maybe you can answer one more thing. It says, in order to secure those funding commitments from other levels of government, they would require the city's support and prioritization for this project. So they need a letter of prioritization. Now, we've given the Boys and Girls Club a letter of prioritization. So I'm just curious as to how many we give, how many we give out, and does that lower, like, it's like giving out a reference letter. If you give it out to everybody, it means nothing. If we're doing a prioritization letter, how does that impact our prior prioritization letters? If you get my drift here.
Mr. McDonald?
I don't know if I would class it as a prioritization, but I think what we're saying is we're committed to this project. And even though we don't, we're not spending the money in '08 budget, I view these commitments in these reports as a commitment that this is going to happen, assuming that the $9 million is raised. We're committed to this $2 million.
So it's assuming that... So it's assuming the nine million is raised?
Correct.
Okay.
Councilor Wing.
Could this be added to our list of section thirty-seven possibilities?
Bonus.
Bonus. Bonus.
That's a good question.
I think certainly it can. And I think what we will do as more section thirty-seven funds come available, I think we should regroup around what our priorities are and where best we could utilize this kind of money.
Need more higher rises.
Yeah.
Okay, are there any other questions, the council? If not, Mr. West, did you want to address Mr. McDonald's question in regards to, I guess, funds needed for '08?
Hi, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you.
Your report says I'm a great community fundraiser. I'm not too sure that that's true. However, the challenge is there. As I was listening to the discussion before, and I saw all these things coming out of '08, I wanted to stand up and say, "We'll fill that vacuum, and you can look after us right away." We will need money in 2008, but we are obviously going to be doing our share of the fundraising. We're going to be, we're committed to raise two million dollars ourselves. And I want you to know that this project is so exciting that people have come forward. One individual in particular has come forward. And if, in fact, all of the pieces of the puzzle fall together, that the, now the provincial and federal governments come on board, we already have a six-figure donor. And I just don't have any problems at all believing that over the period of time, we are going to raise our share of the two million dollars. I won't tell you not to help us out in 2008 if there is any way in which you can do that. We will have to, very shortly, put out an RFP for an architect for the project. Then that particular firm will be doing the specifications of working drawings, and there will be costs incurred long before the shovel goes in the ground, as all staff knows. So if you find a way to help us out prior to 2009, that's fine, but we are committed to raise our share of it as quickly as we possibly can.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Okay, there is a motion on the floor to approve the project. All those in favor? Motion is unanimous. It carried. Any new business I would believe that we can deal with under the regular council? I'd ask Mayor Salsi to come back to the chair.
Members of council, I have a few comments I'd like to begin with this evening by acknowledging some of the recent notable events in our city. I was pleased to see the enormous success of Springlicious, the downtown festival that encouraged residents from all over our community and the Niagara region to explore our downtown. We saw a lot of support for the vendors, businesses, and the artistic endeavors that I have been, that have been taking place here on Queen Street. I'd like to thank, celebrate Old Downtown, and the Downtown BIA, and their community partners for putting on an extraordinary and entertaining event, and for turning people's attention toward downtown Niagara Falls. We look forward to their continued initiatives in this summer events. I'd also like to congratulate the mayor's youth advisory committee on their final event of the school year. The committee held the successful outdoor citywide student film festival at Queens Heights Amphitheater on June 3rd, and I was pleased to be with our high school students as awards were given, and the young, talented local filmmakers were highlighted. Also, I was happy to support the Tim Hortons Camp Day on Wednesday, June 4th, as local stores joined Tim Hortons all over Ontario and Canada to support local kids being sent to camp. Congratulations to Niagara Falls locations for another successful fundraising year. On Saturday, June 7th, marked the celebration for the 125th anniversary of Fairview Cemetery. I'd like to recognize the efforts of staff to organize a wonderful event, complete with the unveiling of the anniversary memorial, the time capsule burial, and the walking historical tours. It was certainly a fitting celebration of this monumental event in Niagara, and I was pleased to be part of that event that played tribute to the historic cemetery grounds and the many families and community members that lay resting there, that have helped shape our city. Also, the seventh Daniel Matthew Daniel Memorial Golf Tournament took place yesterday, and once again saw wonderful support of the show, support from our people in our community. I commend the Daniele family for their continued efforts to fundraise and support worthwhile organizations in our city. I'd like to mention some of the events that are coming up in our community that will be of interest to members of council and residents. The 55th Annual Rose and Flower Show will take place this Thursday, June 12th, at the Niagara Falls Public Library. I'm delighted to end this again this year to present the Best Rose Award Ceremony at 4:00 p.m. The public is invited to view the show. Also, the Friendly Foals Above the Falls Air Show will mark the 25th anniversary of the 483rd Regional Niagara Wing. It will take place on Saturday, June 14th at 10:00 a.m. The air show will be held at the Russell Group Aviation Field on Sodom Road in Niagara Falls, and tickets can be purchased at the show. I also encourage members of the community to visit the Rotary Rib Fest this coming weekend, June 13th through 15th, at Optimus Park. Your support of this exciting event is appreciated, and assists the Rotary Club with the good work that they do in our community. And I'm pleased to invite residents to support the wonderful talents of the seniors in Niagara at this year's Senior Star Competition. As you know, it's a free event. All are welcome, and it's happening at the 4555, that's 4555 Queen Street, on, sorry, on Wednesday, June 16th at 6:30 p.m. Organizers are still accepting contestants, and those interested may also contact Aaron Hickey at Willoughby Manor. And I hope to see many people there as well. Thank you for your comments, or for your diligence in allowing me to make my comments, and I'll pass on to the clerk. Also, communications. Mr. Clerk?
I would move one, two, and three.
Yes, I'd like to, if I could. The clerk is advising me that we should be talking about these, so we know those people who have items on here. So if you don't mind, members of council, I'll just read them. The City of Welland requests that the City of Niagara Falls waive the $492.23 building permit associated with the application at 13952 Morris Road in Cooksmills. Again, moved by Councilor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Peter Angelo. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? The motion is carried. Thank you. Also, item number two, the ministry response for seniors requests that the month of June be proclaimed as seniors' month in the City of Niagara Falls. Again, moved by Councilor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Peter Angelo. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? The motion is carried. Thank you. And the third item, the main and ferry BIA budget, 2008-2009 annual budget be approved. Moved by Councilor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Diodati. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional items for council's consideration?
No.
Okay. Other reports, I'm going to ask our Chair of Community Services for a report on the ratification of Community Services Committee actions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And because I wasn't in here at the beginning of the meeting, I'd like to declare conflict. I missed that. On check 319666. Thank you. The following items are to be ratified from tonight's meeting of the Community Services Committee. The minutes of the May 26, 2008 meeting be approved. Two, that we're under reports, MW 2008-31 Niagara Falls Pollution Control Plan and CSO Abatement Strategy Final Report 2008. One, that council adopt the recommendations set out in the Niagara Falls Pollution Control Plan and CSO Abatement Strategy, June 2008. And that staff prepare a coordinated construction schedule and financing plan for the future implementation of the recommended works. Two, that staff be directed to advertise the notice of study at completion in accordance with the requirements of the Environmental Assessment Act. Three, that all of the public attending the public information sessions be notified. Under BMW 2008-34 Main Street Environmental Assessment, that staff prepare a report on the feasibility of reopening Main Street. Three, under new business, that staff prepare a report on a law grading by law, and that staff investigate controlling dust on Fourth Avenue near the Orpad Arena site. And that I still move.
Seconded by Councilor Fisher. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? The motion is carried. Thank you. Move on to the consent agenda. Members of council, any preference with respect to consent agenda?
Second.
Moved the entire consent agenda by Councilor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Wing. And, sorry, Councilor Wing?
Yeah, Carol, second. I just have a question on one of them. It was, it's MW 2008-33, the 2008 contract for sidewalk and concrete repair. In Table A, we have Main Street from here to Ferry. I'm just wondering about the section to the south of there, between here and Robinson. I'm getting complaints about some of the sidewalks there, particularly the east side of the street immediately south of here. Apparently, some rust or repairs were done in the past. They used asphalt.
Infilling of asphalt, yes.
It's catching with his heels, and it's causing problems. I believe.
Let's see if we can get that question answered. Mr. Holman?
I'm aware of that. I'm aware of that now, I'm asking.
Okay. Okay. All righty. And any other questions? Councilor Thompson?
Yeah, just following up with your previous reading of the events. I've had several people say to me, "You make a motion, one, two, three, four, or five," or whatever. They don't know what, and they're watching the agenda. Maybe the clerk or something could briefly, when we make a motion like that for the consent agenda, just to read out quickly headlines of it, so people know what we're doing.
Well, either one or the other. I think when people have a proclamation request, they'd like to know that it's been approved by council and been given some publicity, so appreciate that. We do have the motion before us with respect to the consent agenda. Having seen no other questions or comments, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, any additional bylaws or amendments? I see there's one change on bylaw 2008-101.
Well, you already approved 2008-99 earlier. 2008-101 should be omitted. This bylaw actually was approved previously. So it was an administrative error that it's there. So your bylaws will go to 2008-101.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to introduce the bylaws? Bylaws be given a first reading, moved by Councilor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councilor Diodati. Once again, council's heard the motion. Any questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried.
Bylaws 2008-95 to 2008-101 read at first time.
A motion to give the bylaws a second and third reading, moved by Councilor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councilor Diodati. Once again, you've heard the motion. Any further comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried.
Bylaws 2008-95 to 2008-101 read a second and third time in the past.
Thank you. Members of council, new business? Councilor Diodati?
Mr. Worship, I just wanted to bring up a point here in regards to our official policy with our staff. I'd like to see us add to our official policy, when staff are away for whatever reason, that it be part of the policy that they update their voicemail and their email to have a response indicating that they are away and when they'll be returning. I think it would be professional, it would make them much more accountable.
Okay.
It would make them, it would make them more professional, make them more accountable. And we would save a lot of frustration with the taxpayer if we knew that somebody was in fact away and when they'd be returning, rather than waiting and calling us and asking, "How come they don't return my calls?" I know most staff do it, they're diligent with it, some don't. And it is truly frustrating. So I would make that motion.
Counselor, I'm informed by the clerk that we already have a policy. Mr. Clerk, could you address that, please?
Yeah, there is a HR policy that directs that all staff do that when they're away.
Maybe we can take.
Except for Mr. McDonald.
Well, I would actually mention, he was away last week, and he did not admit a response he was away. Well, then, you know what we need to do? We need to have a refresher, because it's not being adhered to, and it's causing a lot of frustration. They need to respect that policy. So we need a refresher sent through to the staff.
Yep, we can do that.
That's a reminder, we can do that. Thank you. Councilor Thompson?
Yes, thank you. I have three, four items here, very quickly, to deal with. I was at a Victoria Center BIA meeting, and one of the frustrations that they have there is the rail lamps in front of the casino on Victoria Avenue not being maintained properly. Apparently, the casino does not maintain them. It's kind of no man's land, and the grass is deteriorated, and it really looks like an eyesore. When it was first installed, it was kind of a very pleasant area with landscaping and bushes. I wonder if we could determine who is responsible for the upkeep of that. Certainly, it should be the casino. If it isn't, we should ask him to take on that responsibility, because the people in the area are trying to do their best. They're trying to put up new lights and all kinds of improvements along there, and they'd like to see the other side of the street look appropriate.
Mr. McDonald, can you respond?
Yes, Mr. Worship, yeah, I agree. It's a real problem, and we looked at it last year. Just, in fact, in the last couple of weeks, I've asked staff in the Parks Department to give me a proposal on that area. But I know from last year when we looked at it, the major problem is the lack of irrigation system there, where we have it on the other side. And of course, as you know, on the other side, it was paid for by the private sector. We have tried to coordinate the casino along with the BIA some discussions, but the city doesn't own the property, and we do.
Who owns it?
It's owned by OLG. Yeah, Casino owns it, and we were after them, because the only way to really fix it up is to do the underground system and the plant. And the last time we talked to them, they weren't willing to participate. I've asked for another proposal from our own staff with the idea we'll go to them and ask for some kind of an arrangement between them.
I'd like to make a motion that we send a resolution through, adopted by this council, to the OLG and to our Member of Parliament, asking them to take on the responsibility of looking after their appropriate property in a prime tourist area and make it equivalent to the rest of the rail line in the maintenance and upkeep of it.
Moved by Councilor Thompson, or seconded, Councilor Fisher. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Sorry, could you, all those in favor, please hold your hands up. It's carried. Thank you.
There has been an ongoing behind-the-scenes situation with respect to brochure racks at the Gateway in Grimsby. Everybody has been encouraging the region and the, I guess, the economic development people there to accept the brochures from Niagara Falls and the racks at the Gateway. The response has been slow and almost unresponsive, but basically four hundred dollars a brochure rack for the people in the City of Niagara Falls to put their advertising there. I think that's rather excessive, and a lot of people are very upset with that. We, as a community who pay probably twenty-two percent or twenty-three percent of the regional coppers, not only helped to build that gateway in Grimsby, but we also subsidized it for, I don't know how many years, at a hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit annually, putting in our share of the, to keep the Gateway going up there. I think it's rather unfair that this isn't dealt with quickly, and I would have a resolution of this council to the region to look at this issue and see if they can resolve it as quickly as possible.
Just to that point, Counselor, I had discussions with Mr. Faruolo about a week ago, and some people were on holiday at that area of concern. And I have, I think we'll be having a breakthrough and an announcement, hopefully. I'm looking at this optimistically, but I've expressed your concerns and concerns of this council, the ones you outlined today, to the, to the members, and I hope that they will give us due consideration. So we can back it up with resolution if you wish. I don't have a problem with that, but I think we'll hopefully have a favorable response sooner than later.
This has actually been going on for about four months now. Initially brought up by Mr. Berlin and others who were involved with the brochure racks with Niagara Falls tourism. So I think it's essential that we have a motion and that this council is supporting the industry in having their brochures there. So I would so move.
Okay, moved by Councilor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Carrio. Any comments or questions further? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you.
In the last while, I certainly have been a critic of some of the activities going on at the Niagara Falls Humane Society. I offered my services a little while ago to try to improve relations and make things happen to improve the, certainly, the Humane Society's situation financially and otherwise with their building, and also create a liaison between the city and the Humane Society in a better light. between the city and the Humane Society in a better light. This week, Alderman Wing sent me an email with respect to a situation where animals were being kept and not being cared for properly. There were, I think, four or five horses and small, three small ones. Through Mr. Ira Fida, contact was made with the Humane Society. If you can imagine, the chairman of the Humane Society went out to the property himself. He is familiar with horses, in fact, is involved with horses. He found that the individual couldn't look after the animals, and was going to send them to the slaughterhouse. He inquired on the amount that the horses were worth. He acquired the horses for the amount of money that the individual was interested in, adopted some of them out immediately that were in good health, the small babies and the small horses and their mothers, and took the rest of them to his own farm to rehabilitate them and get them back into good health. If that isn't above and beyond by the chairman of the Humane Society, I don't know what is. And I think that that was a great effort put forward by Mr. De La La, and I would like to have a resolution from this council to the Humane Society and to him in particular, saying how much we appreciate the quick response and the manner in which the whole matter was resolved. It, I don't think we'll be able to duplicate that. I think that was one of-
That's a good gesture. I think Mr. De La La certainly has a great concern for animals in general, and I know he's done that with others, and he has, in Centennial Farms, I think he has over 41 horses that they stable there, and certainly very concerned. So I know he's trying to do his best with regard to our animal population, so good motion. So any comments? Yes.
New business?
Okay, one second. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Counselor Iannone?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like council to send a letter of congratulations, if you notice Rob Lepense is not here tonight, and his wife had an early arrival of their new baby, Meredith-
Yes.
-to join her sister, Madeline, and he will be back in a couple of weeks, and they're all healthy. But I'd like council, a motion sent for council to send them a letter of congratulations.
That's good. Good idea. Moved by Counselor Iannone, seconded by Counselor Wing. Any further discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor. Good. And just to bring you up to speed, Counselor Diodati, I just note, for your benefit as well, that the median at Highway 420 was addressed last week. All the little green weeds were removed, and I was pleased because I was about to send a letter, ask council to send a letter again. So the maintenance people were out, so that, that stone portion above the, on the median, of course, at 420, is still looking very pristine. So I know you had a concern last year, and so that matter's been taken care of. And something else?
Yes, Your Worship, I think it was with Counselor Carrio. He was making you quote it. He was making the salad.
Yes, he was. He did have bushel baskets.
That's right. That's what I thought. Guaranteed, no dogs were urinating on that there. Anyway, Your Worship, something else I did want to mention, I know it's been addressed, but Springlicious, the festival that was down downtown this weekend, I know most of this council made their way down there, and it was incredible to see so many bodies down in the street. I always dreamed that the street wouldn't be able to handle the weight. It was packed. People were excited. People I haven't seen in a long time from other communities were coming in. And to actually take a walk all the way up and down that street, to walk into those art galleries, and to see the likes of John Newby moving here from Niagara to Lake, and the people that are coming into the area, these places look outstanding. They're putting their money where their mouth is. They're moving their investments here. They're looking to live above their studios, and there's a real genuine buzz downtown. It's actually, you're seeing cool people hanging out downtown. So yet, you're seeing the musicians, the artists. It's really become hip. It's extremely unique, and you can just see, there's a critical mass of development happening there within the arts. And if you haven't already, take a trip down there and experience it. There's a couple of festivals they've got coming this year with Daredevil Days and with Elvis Event and whatnot, and it was outstanding. I never heard one negative comment as I was down there. I had just people continually excited about what's happening downtown. So anyway, I just wanted to publicly acknowledge what an outstanding job that they're doing and anything you could do.
They did. That was very good. Counselor Iannone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to follow that up, it was nice to see Morticide Groon's article on the front page of the paper. I like him telling us that he never thought Mr. Lickman's plan would work. I wish he'd have been here then. He'd have saved us a lot in campaign ads. But I will say that he did make a comment in his, in his article in regards to why he chose not to renovate Rosberg's. Just before the election 2003, and I couldn't find it, and I save everything, so I was upset I couldn't find it, we had a consultant come and talk to us about how to revitalize downtown, and to revitalize downtown started at Rosberg's. And I think at that point, Counselor Thompson and I had agreed on one thing in a long time, and that was to expropriate Rosberg's, to amend themselves to that, that report. I think his comments, he didn't want to start at Rosberg's. He thought he needed to do the rest of the street. Flies in the face of ASAP Ted Audit that we have done for the city that's sitting on a book somewhere, and flies in the face of that report. And I just wondered, I think it was just prior to the election, if we could, I know it was early, late 2003, but there is a report that you could show Mr. Groon that said, "If you start here, the catalyst will work down." And maybe he just doesn't have those documents yet, so maybe we could take a look for them?
We could. We can have staff look into it. And I also want to remind members of council that next Monday on the 16th of June, we'll be having a workshop that you should all be advised. It was in your, you got a memo today, the workshop. I'm not sure if we have the location set. Is it the library? Mr. Clerk?
It's not the library. We'll have an email sent to you in the coming day on where the location will be and what the format will be.
So that next Monday, all councils invited, and the public, I believe, as well. Is that correct?
The public can come. We're not sure what the location is. I mean, we're still working those details out.
It'll be posted on our website?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Pardon? Moved by Counselor Carrio, moved from German, and seconded by Counselor Maves. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you very much.